Are you able to unmute your mic? And just so I know that you are. Or Dr. Harmon, are you able to unmute your mic? So I know you're connected.
Is that just for the work session?
Ninety-five.
Do I have a lot of this on topic?
You don't think that happened in the.
Right, but I guess what happened was when you locked down this computer, you shut it off.
One second.
Yeah.
Director Vanga Daslam, can you hear me? I think. Locked out of the other space, I don't see that.
Well, no, we can start, it's just that maybe take some minutes. And so we could start.
I could take notes.
All to do direct. Could we start the meeting? I know maybe it takes a minute, but would that be able to start?
Yes.
Make note.
Go ahead and do that. Thank you. I will be trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
All right, apologize. I would like to welcome everyone to our work session, our 2021-22 budget proposal. Calling the meeting tomorrow at 5:41 PM. Director Vanga Daslam will be attending the meeting by phone and will be joining the meeting late. She has another previous engagement, but is really excited to get back in person. So she will be here at the next meeting. Chief Accountability Officer, Dr. Joel Harmon, is also attending the meeting via telephone. And at this time, in terms of superintendent, would you please introduce?
Thank you, President Danes. I'd like to introduce Ben Rarick, our Executive Director of Budget and Finance, to begin our presentation.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Vela, it's my pleasure to provide an overview of the fiscal year 22 budget proposal for the Kent School District. I'll just say that I did a dry run of this presentation. I realized I have a lot of content, so I'm going to be moving briskly, which is not to suggest that if you want to ask a question, just indicate, but I'm going to be moving to get through my content. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is that at the board meeting itself later this evening, I won't be redoing the full hours worth of content, right? I've got highlights that I will be going over at the board meeting and going over for the community that what took place today, rather than giving the same presentation twice, okay? Which is, of course, the purpose of the work session. If I could direct you to the first page, which should provide a roadmap of what I intend to cover in the work session. Five key topics, first of all, kind of a grounding in our core values and our budget priorities for this budget. Second, a review of the actual proposed budget, which includes an overview of revenues, expenditures, enrollments, levy amounts, and the five funds review. Remember, we tend to focus on the general fund, but we are in fact acting on all five funds. I am going to provide a this-year update, which is kind of a where are we now? Which is a helpful pretext to understand our budget for next year. Also talk about the F-195F, which is our outlook, and a budget extension request, which you have in your packet. And finally, some discussion, as we have before, of some key long-term budget considerations, some strategic considerations, which I make part of every presentation, given our history, given what we're trying to do in terms of sustaining our financial health. Okay, this is a similar slide, but I want to focus you on what kind of the regulatory actions you are taking today. The first is that you're conducting a public hearing under WAC 392, okay? We've actually done two of these this year. We've historically done one, but this year we did two out of kind of an abundance of transparency. Number two is you're adopting the F-195, which is the large technical document that you have in your packet. Now, historically, we've provided you a series of documents that are a little more appropriate for a lay audience. Those include, obviously, the PowerPoints, both the one today I'm presenting and the ones we have historically provided you in the three work sessions, as well as what's known as the Budget Book, which is a series of very helpful graphs, charts, that provide information not otherwise contained in the F-195. You'll be asked to adopt an extension for the debt service fund. And finally, you'll be reviewing a state mandated report, which is the final slide in our presentation, and I've included as an appendix. Okay, this is an overview of the calendar, which essentially this 8/25 date is the culmination of a process stemming back into February. Three budget work sessions, each with their series of materials that are available on our, you know, our budget and finance link. The first budget hearing, which ran concurrently with budget work session number three, a technical review with ESD that produced a couple of small technical changes. And finally, today's proposed adoption of the fiscal year 22 budget. Board members have asked, and I have tried to kind of ground our budget in our values, tried to tell the story of, you know, the work of our strategic blueprint and our discussions in the spring about budget priorities with some of the investments that are included in the budget. I'd like to get into that a bit. First of all, our efforts on this have been evolving, like what exactly, what form should that take? And how do we tell that story? But at a high level, I look to tell the story in two ways. One is to be able to show how equity, excellence, and community manifest in our budget proposal. But then also, the more detailed level, really zero in on that theory of action, okay? In our strategic blueprint, which is really supposed to tell in practical terms how we are translating our vision into actionable steps. And a couple, three things jump out in relationship to that theory of action. First, that there is an emphasis on both academic and social emotional outcomes for students, which is key. Second, that we've committed, as an organization, to closing gaps in all their various manifestations. And finally, that we're committed to career pathways, not just academic ones, but career pathways. And I think you'll see in the discussion that follows, I'm, this is difficult to talk through, you guys, so I'm going to take a break every minute. Both in the earliest discussion of board member priorities, and then ultimately the investments you see in the budget, how these manifest. Okay, this is a slide that you've seen before, but is important to show as part of the record that, you know, there was a robust discussion about board member budget priorities and the investments that manifest. Couple of things that I'd like to pull out. So first of all, do we see a reflection of our value for both academic outcomes and social emotional outcomes? I would argue that we do. On the academic side, we see pretty robust increases in staffing at all levels of our system, elementary, middle, and high on a ratio basis, which we'll talk about later. But we also see investments in social emotional learning and professional development, both from a training standpoint, as well as a staffing standpoint. From an equity standpoint, where do we see the budget manifest? Well, as we've talked now for four months, a real new, robust approach to making sure that the fees that we charge in this district are consistent with our values. And that's been a whole reset. And now, the Kent School District has essentially been advised writ large that there will be no fees for classes. There will be no obstacles, financial obstacles for classes and supplies that students need to succeed in those classes. And I'm hopeful that kind of sets a new course in our district and is an important part of our strategic vision. And finally, on the career pathways part, as we'll get into later, there are staffing enhancements in our CTE program. My goodness. This is going to take a couple of breaks, so I'm sorry about the mask. There are staffing enhancements in the CTE program, principally in the form of career specialist positions. And then following up on that equity piece, we have sent out to our schools and our school-based partners, our staff in the schools, a new framework for student fees that essentially is premised on these five points. First, that we're going to avoid fees if we can. And if we have a fee, there's got to be a real good reason for it. And there can be no situation in which we have a fee where it is linked to something that a student needs to do well in a class, period. And I regret to say that, I'm not sure that's always been the case, but I'm here to say that there was a clear reset, that that will be the case in the future. We also made a strategic investment to help our ASB activities thrive in an era when the funding for ASB programs is increasingly uncertain. Finally, on the SEO and academic fronts, strengthening co-curricular activities, I think, is part of a commitment to make sure that the social emotional aspect of a child's well-being is receiving support as well as the academic portion. And fortunately, SIR funds have provided us an opportunity to strengthen some of our extended learning opportunity programs. And that has meant, for example, increased summer school opportunities, a rollout, which Dr. Harmon may or may not wish to speak about in terms of a school grant concept, where schools will have the opportunity to apply for SIR funds to strengthen extended day programming. And so in these ways, I hope to demonstrate that the work he did in the spring and the conversations we have in strategic plan are in fact real in the context of the budget and guide the discussions. And I'd like to get into some of the nuts and bolts of the proposal. Hey, there's a series of slides here, they're probably more for reference, but I'm going to move through fairly quickly. This is a general fund summary that's lifted straight from your F-195. And it's a high-level summary, I'll just pull out a couple of key facts. First of all, as we'll talk about later, after consecutive years of building back up our fund balance, we seem to have things kind of back to an even keel in terms of spending about what we're bringing in. And we are projecting a slight decline in the general fund balance for the year we're in now. That is not a problem, that is in fact a good thing at this point, given where we're at. And you see that reflected here. Second thing is that you see that budget to budget, our enrollment projections have steadily gone down as the reality of the pandemic has reflected in Kent. And frankly, for all purposes, all of our neighboring districts as well. You see that as well, and enrollment and the watch on enrollment is going to be a consistent theme in my discussion this evening. Finally, you see a large projected increase in revenue that is driven almost substantially by SIR. And the thing I want to highlight with SIR is it's not money that you can use for whatever you want to, and it's certainly not money that we want to rely on for our kind of ongoing operational costs. So one of the challenges, the strategic challenges we'll talk about later is the treatment of the SIR dollars and making sure that we're prepared for the year after we no longer have access to them. Next slide, so I'm giving you three slides here. This is a data table on revenue projection. This is a data table on expenditure projection. And then this is a data table that combines those, okay? On the revenue slide, you'll notice a couple of things. You'll see, actually, we project a small decrease in our state apportionment. Why? Because, as we talked about, our projections of enrollment have gone down as the reality of student enrollment in Kent has set in vis-à-vis the pandemic. So that doesn't mean that like the per pupil funding from the state is going down. It means that we've become more and more conservative as we've lost considerable students. We're going to talk about that later. We're in the final year of our approved levy. It'll be something that you'll be talking about a fair amount in the fall. But for the final year of our approved levy, we do have a step up, a second year increase in funding. So that is a source of revenue enhancement for the district for next year. If I may go to the data table slide. Now, as I think you're going to see a slide later, our preliminary July fund balance is approximately $60 million, okay? That's a good number to be at, slightly less than what we started with. I believe we started the year at 64 and a half. Going into next year, you see a projected year-end fund balance of 44, approximately. Again, remember that it reflects an assumption that we spend every dollar that we're budgeting, which we typically do not do, right? So keep that in mind as you view that fund balance number. Okay? Remember also, we talked about the general fund at great length, but we're effect acting on all five funds. And if I could pick up just a few highlights for you from each of the funds that are proposed. With regards to the ASB fund, this was a question I received, I think, from two board members via email. So I wanted to address that specifically. The question was, have we taken any steps as a district to fortify, if you will, the ASB programs for students in light of the fact that they are now limited by statute and how they can raise funds? The answer is yes, we have. And in fact, a fairly robust step. You will not see that manifest, and I think this was a question you asked, Director Bento, you will not see that manifest in like a transfer of money to the ASB fund. That's not how this works. How it will manifest is the general fund assuming some of the costs that the ASB program previously assumed. And we've tried to maintain, from an accounting guidance standpoint, a clear, you know, clear line in terms of what's appropriate for the general fund to pay for and what's appropriate for the ASB to pay for. But we feel like we have essentially, if you follow me on this, relieved the ASB fund of expenses they would otherwise have incurred, which therefore frees them up, right? To have to use their existing revenue with fewer expense. With regard to the debt service fund, again, the debt service fund is essentially just payments on the bonds that we sell. We are planning the final bond sale of our original 2016 bond of the voters this fall. So you'll be hearing more about that. And the debt service fund merely reflects the scheduled payments for those bonds in fiscal year 22. The capital projects fund will receive the revenue from that bond sale. To give you a very high-level overview of the capital projects fund, the budget basically comprises of the capital levy, right? Which is about 20% of it. The technology levy, which is about 35% of it. Okay, then we get into some of the bond projects, right? So we still have some additional support to the new Lab Academy, River Ridge. Most of those costs are going to fall into our current fiscal year, but depending on the timing, right? Some of them may, in fact, manifest in fiscal year 22. And then finally, we have roofing projects, we have some remodels, we have a kind of a sundry list of kind of mid-range projects that comprise the capital projects fund. And finally, the transportation vehicle fund is, to put it bluntly, is planning by four buses. That's really what it is. Or the number of buses, though, we can afford at the time of the plan of the sale, given cash flow. So that's, it's not that it's four is set in concrete. Okay, enrollment is a critical part of the Kent budget story. Here, what you're seeing is prior year actuals compared to next year's budget. Okay, I'm going to show you a different look later, that's going to make it look very different. But here, you're looking at actuals, okay? If I went back further into history, you would see that at one point, Kent was in the 26,000 range, nearing 27,000. So we certainly have come down a fair amount. And what you see is that we are assuming a relatively modest bounce from returning to in-person instruction. The theory being, if we lost students because we got out of in-person instruction, the theory holds that many, some of those students will return when we return it, okay? We will learn a great deal tomorrow about that and the next day. Okay, staffing. Want to be clear about something here, because there are significant movement in staffing. But our budgeted staffing is not actually going up. So you'll hear me talk about staffing enhancements. What you see in the F-195, the budgeted staffing is essentially flat. What's accelerating is hiring, okay? And so what you're seeing is richer allocations to schools. And what we're seeing in each month, when you get your financial statement, I show you how many staff we're actually paying. That number has consistently gone up. And that's what you see here in the comparison of current actuals to prior year actuals is an increase at that time of almost 40 employees, despite declining enrollment, okay? So actual staffing to schools is increased. Also, actual materials and supplies allocations to schools is actually also increasing. It is budgeted to be the highest rate it has been since 2017. Here's some little bit of depth and texture to the staffing conversation. If you have questions, I'm going to have to drag weight up here. But just at a high level, as we've talked about, an aggressive move to remove splits in our district, okay? Which is, you know, that is an investment, a significant investment. A decrease in the K3 numbers, again, to try to get closer and closer to the state K3 17 to 1 funding target. So each time we think we're getting close to that, enrollment fluctuates on us, right? Adjusted class size for middle school. Increased staffing at high school. 1.0 FT in the basic ed staffing, with the four comprehensive high schools plus two new AP positions. Okay? And then there are some additional enhancements we're going to talk about in the context of SIR. But right now, let me just provide you a quick three-slide, where are we at now? Like, we're talking about next year's budget, right? Where are we at, like, right now, as we're at the end of August, where our books are at this point? This slide, I keep putting this slide in front of you, because I think there's really two slides that you should keep looking at every month, that will give you the executive summary of what's happening. This slide shows us, in any given month, when you look at how much money you're bringing in and how much money you're spending, what is the ratio of that? Are you spending more than you're bringing in, or are you bringing in more than you're spending? So look at the green there, back in 1819. Remember, we were in full recovery mode, right? So we were spending less than we were bringing in. As a result, you see that green line is the highest line, right? When that number is over one, it means that we're bringing in more revenue than we're spending. Are you with me on that, okay? So now see where we're at in the dark green. The dark green is current year, okay? That's that dark green and that blue, which was the 1718 year, is really honing in right around one, right? Which is kind of where we want to be. Okay, this is a very strange year, we, enrollment declined, we had some assistance from the state. There were a lot of things coming and going, but when it all comes out, we're going to be pretty close to that one or a little lower than one. And that's frankly where we want to be, in my view, permanently, kind of in perpetuity. So that was a good, and this is a preliminary number, but I really don't expect it to change all that much. The second slide is actual fund balance. So you see that change in the green line, kind of manifesting in the yellow line. You see, the two previous lines had a very similar shape, right? You started the year with a much lower fund balance than you ended. You see that yellow line flattening out, right? That means that our expenditures are coming in conformance of other revenues, which is a good thing, okay? And I actually think those, the. And I, I actually think those, the, you know, the yellow and the, and the rust color one are actually going to cross in August. They may not, but it's going to be real close. Here's our five-year look at enrollment. You've seen this slide before, but for the benefit of the group. We lost quite a few students during the pandemic. We were not alone in that. Many districts did. But my prediction was that in March and April, as we started to reintroduce in-face instruction, we would see a rebound. We did not see a rebound. That heightened my anxiety just a bit. It makes me even more eager to see the results for tomorrow. Okay. And so why? So, and, and there's a slide on this later, but just to touch on this. Obviously, enrollment drives our funding, but enrollment impacts us in other ways as well. So one of the ways it impacts us is our levy. So the state limits the amount that we can collect from our levy based on the number of kids we have. There is a per student cap. And so as you increase or decrease the number of students you have, the amount you can collect from your community varies. So further enrollment reductions would becomes even more and more of a factor in terms of making some decisions for us in essence, not having the same amount of discretion in terms of crafting what you want to do with the levy, but essentially what you have to do in view of state law. Okay. I'll be touching on this a little bit more, but I'll, I'll handle this briefly. At this point, there is a resolution in your packet for the debt service fund. It's requesting extension of $150,000, about half of 1% of the debt service fund. We have been looking into why we are sending out just infinitesimally more payments than we budgeted for. And we have learned that there is a discrepancy in the timing of the payment from the county in comparison to what we budget to, which is the final closing documents when we sell the bond. And that shouldn't happen. And the one thing I can tell you is we budgeted correctly, meaning that our budget number is in conformance with the closing. It's just like when you get a mortgage for a house, you know, you get that stack of papers that is for 30 years, how much you're paying for each month, right? And that's what we get in essence, and we budget to that. And we did that correctly. But it turns out that the payments didn't actually go in performance with that big stack of dates. And we are still in the fact finding mission of why that is the case. We don't actually make those payments here in the Kent School District. But it does require a very small extension. Otherwise, we'll exceed the authority in the debt service fund. Okay, another thing that's part of your resolution this evening. Just going to take a sec here. These are not made for speeches. You include the four-year outlook as well. There's a data table in your resolution. Four-year outlooks are controversial across the states. There's kind of two different philosophies about four-year outlooks. And I'll just say that I, I don't, I don't view outlooks as self fulfilling prophecies. In other words, I don't think we're actually going to have $18 million of fund balance in four years. I hope we take the actions necessary to not be there. The point of the exercise is to demonstrate if you are on a course of spending more than you're taking in, if you're on this course of having declining fund balance, if you assume all that you know about the current situation, if you apply OSPI's revenue estimates, if you assume essentially our pattern of bargaining agreements, where would you end up? That doesn't mean you'll end up there. It means that that's what your current set of assumptions would lead you to believe. And I believe that's the purpose of it. Because otherwise, every four-year fund balance would show absolutely no changes fund balance, right? Because everybody say, well, we have a plan to make, you know. So it helps us tell the story of the considerations and the challenges that we have over the next four years. And I think this does an accurate job of doing that. Five considerations. First, our demographer is projecting a, a rebound in enrollment as he has for other districts, but not a huge rebound. You know, I, I, I fully believe that, you know, as our financial situation evolves, you know, our, our, our considerations will as well. But it's been a long time since we've had a bargaining agreement that was IPD, right? We get IPD, right? So that is sort of kind of baked into the assumption about what is our current spending behavior relative to future revenue collection that we know. Okay, and then finally, I've shown like a fourth year, you see a little dive in the fourth year, right? And I'm just trying to illustrate that at some point Esser goes away. And that is going to have a very material impact on our organization, depending on how we spend it and compartmentalize it and not rely on it. And under normal circumstances, you hear a lot of districts talk about, well, we'll go out for a levy and ask for a levy that will help us continue these programs. But if you have declining enrollment, you can't do that because you're under the per pupil cap. Right, so that fourth year kind of reflects a belief that there is an issue there that we need to be kind of long-term thinking about. Okay, how are we doing? We don't want to care for time. So now I'd, I'd like to ground us in some long-term strategic budgeting considerations, some of which you've heard before, some of which we haven't talked about. So our Esser guidance is kind of settling in. We've received a little bit more wiggle room in terms of the guidance of how this money can be spent. Okay, I want to say this very clearly. I'm not going to mince words about this. This is a substantial amount of money. It's a substantial amount of money. But it is money for a purpose. It's not just money for Kent, right? The efforts that it takes to build up program to, to strategically utilize this amount of money, that's a lot of work. It's a significant load for the system, especially during a pandemic. Okay. I mean, we're looking at after the withholdings, close to $90 million over the course of culminating in, in fiscal year 24. So that is, that is a strategic challenge, not just for Kent, for all larger title districts. We have fully claimed Esser 1 at this point. We have not started claiming Esser 2, although we expect to do so in the early stages of fiscal year 22. But I want to give you a flavor for the fact that it's, it's a, it's not a small undertaking and it's a community-wide effort. Okay, I have tried to establish and, and kind of reiterate five basic principles of Esser budgeting. The first be, is that in, in, in spirit, the money is for preventing, preparing and responding to COVID. The federal government has come out with additional language that's given us a little bit kind of a wider berth in terms of how we interpret that. Like, for example, enhancing instruction is considered responding COVID to the extent that we're trying to make up for the learning, not learning loss, but the learning acceleration opportunities present in the system. Absolutely want to limit our long-term commitments with the short-term funding. What we have to assume is short-term funding. Want to focus on direct student impacts, obviously, as that is the purpose of the dollars. My hope ideally, although this is not something you can just wave a wand and do is we, we don't want to like ramp up and make the fourth year our highest year of spend because that makes the cliff even more substantial. So hopefully we kind of smooth our investment over the period of this time. And then finally, this is an opportunity for us to think creatively and broadly. And I know that there's lots of smart people on our team doing just that. Staffing in relationship with Esser in the buildings at a minimum so far. Again, I may have to defer to you Wade. An additional 23 school success coach positions funded through Esser and an additional one FTE in each of the six high schools to support credit recovery, learning loss and acceleration. Okay, we're getting close to the end. Okay. Here's five things to be thinking about. First is the challenge of implementing our Esser expenditure plan as we just discussed. The second is we have a lot of levy activity coming in the fall. Not only are we planning for our next levy, but we'll be certifying the amount of our final year in our existing levy and talking about as our enrollments come in, what the per pupil, pure pupil cap means for Kent. Love bond sale in the fall, which will provide the capital projects fund its last installment of funding from that six, that 2016 initiative. Really interested to see what we see in enrollments and how many students opt for fully online programs like Wawa or, you know, purely virtual programs. And what it means kind of going forward in the big picture about what offerings we can and should offer to, to, to keep our students. And then we continue to make steps in the community eligibility program, which I know is of interest to the board. It has become. I guess the context of that was once the federal government extended the waiver for free meals, the, the urgency of that, because it's, it's going to be, it's going to be free meals one way or the other. But the intent of the district continues to be to advance an implementation of CEP. And then on the levy point, you know, basically have three big decisions, which is the amount of the levy, the length of the levy and the timing of the levy. And that will be an important conversation in the fall. And the final consideration of that is in the past, you will recall that we had a message of tax rate to our community, keeping tax rates constant. Now that the per pupil inflator, or excuse me, the per pupil cap appears to be an issue for cat as our enrollments go down. It, it, it may be more about what we can do within the confines of the law rather than with a pure blank slate of options in front of us. Do you understand what I'm saying about that? Our, we now become part of the community of districts that have to deal with that per pupil cap. And that makes no assumptions about what I'm going to see tomorrow in terms of enrollment, but it is now kind of an issue for Kent as we go forward. Okay, so that completes my presentation. There is an appendix slide, which I'm required by law to provide to you, which essentially outlines the difference between the amount we spend on our non-salary cost centers and the amount we receive from the state. It is the same as it's always been. We spend a lot more than we get as every district in the state does. I'm happy to answer any questions about that slide.
I have a question. I have a couple. I noticed we talked about Sal being a budget priority. Yeah. That's due to emotional learning. And I, I see the slide with the additional school success coach positions. I'm just curious of any consideration being put into deans, interventionists at elementary, middle, high school. Because I know that Sal's been a priority. And I noticed on what we're voting on tonight, there's like contract services with mental health providers. Yeah, so I'm just kind of curious like how that kind of fits into what we're looking at.
Yeah. Just right here. Yeah. I probably wouldn't be able to go into the second layer of depth on that. I might have to defer to Randy, but there are significant investments on multiple fronts. One is that I can speak to personally. One is professional development that's social emotional in nature. The second is I would need Randy or somebody or Wade perhaps to speak to the details of the staffing enhancement and the interventionists, because I know we have two types of interventionists. But the fir-, the third is these, the, the emotional, the so, the supports we receive from, was it Valley Cities? Yeah, would you bail me out here?
Yes, we are investing in a number of fronts. Some of that will come through our categorical funding, such as our contracts with our different community agencies, such as Valley Cities. We've increased the capacity and to add more mental health counseling. Kent Youth and Family Services is another one that we go through communities and schools. We have increased the number of site coordinators through those contracts. And then we also still have capacity in our LAP readiness to learn dollars. And we've, we've actually left capacity in that so that as school resumes and we start to understand maybe what are some of the things that are facing the kids that we can pivot and try to find some additional community resources that we might be able to, you know, fund through those, those funds. In addition, you know, we continue to invest in supports to the staff that already exist in the building, such as the counselors, school counselors are essential to making sure that the social emotional needs of our kids are met. And so we, you know, invested in multi-tier systems of support coaches at the district level. And we've added assistance to those so that we can get out to more schools, help build capacity of the staff that are at the schools to address the needs that the kids may be presenting.
Awesome, so a lot of it is just contract services outside, not necessarily people in building.
So yeah, a lot of it, it does come, some of the, some comes because there's some expertise with outside community agencies. Sometimes it becomes their uniquely poised to because they're already have built strong community relationships. And so they're best to maybe serve some of these families. But the, the addition of the success coaches are also important because we, we built the job description in a way that it addresses both academic and social emotional. And so whatever is identified at the building level, those coaches can concentrate on, on those areas.
And do we know, I'm thinking as in my building, we have four counselors in my school and there a lot is being put onto them, but their plate is the same size, right? So there's a bunch going on to them. So as I've made considerations of hiring more school counselors, I just know that a lot of the counselors at my school, they try their best to do mental support, but they're doing a lot of guidance of graduation requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So I worry that we're putting a lot onto their plate. And I'm just wondering if we thought about what other in-house support? I'm a big proponent of wraparound services. So what other in-house things we can provide? So I guess I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, and I will tell you that in addition, last year, there was a law change regarding counselors that actually go into effect for the 2223 school year. And we've already started conversations around moving to the fact that school counselors need to be utilized to be, to provide direct services to kids. And so we've already started the conversations around having that plan in place for the 2223 to make sure that those counselors have maybe less duties that are not, you know, direct services to kids and, and try to concentrate their skill sets where they're best used.
I have another question. I'm going to defer to my other colleagues if they have other questions.
Um, first of all, I think it, it's good for me to know that the coaches are also have a dual role. I think we, I think our community is not quite aware of that because it's been brought to my attention that we were spending a lot on academic, but I don't think they understand that, you know, some advertisement on that, that they have training and are going to support the SEL too would be helpful to our community. I have another question. Can you give me some examples of co-curricular activities that we're strengthening? I mean, are we actually giving them funding to cooperate or could you give me some examples of that, please?
Ken, so I guess in this definition, co-curricular is reflecting anything that is not part of the basic core of instruction for the district. So that can include extended day. It can include extended year. It can include both academic or non-academically inclined or focused activities. So there's a couple of things. First of all, we are, and I don't know if Dr. Herman's still on the phone, but she's sort of taken the lead on this, the, the construction of the mini grant proposal through the Esser funds in which schools will be able to access funds to strengthen the very things I just listed. With, you know, with some creativity and entrepreneurial notion on their part, like they wouldn't be necessarily bound to do one, the other either. And so that is, I think, going to be a significant boost, if you will, to our ability to launch those programs. those programs at the school level. The second thing is, you know, we did really have a, you know, reflective conversation of the importance of athletics and clubs and activities for students after the pandemic and how critical that is in addition to the normal academic work. And that really was a big driver in the discussion we had earlier about fortifying the ASB program through the actions we took, which I think, I mean, I have the exact, it was in excess of a half a million dollars of expenditure on our part to make sure that we can continue to offer those programs while students are not charged those fees and limited in fundraising. So that, that, that arena of co-curricular received a, you know, very aggressive, deliberate, intentional investment on, on the, you know, in the budget.
But I hear you saying like kids have perhaps in the past were limited to participate. They're now, you know, reducing those fees or they're not there. So then they can step up and that's, that's good. Does any of that include transportation? Like, you know, if they have practice after school and they don't have somebody that can pick them up or is there anything?
Yeah. If I can just add one thing to that, because I, I, it's important to note, it was actually like when we're talking about ASB programs, the law actually prevents us from funding that program directly. The ASB program is supposed to be funded through fundraising and ASB fees. That, that was the original statutory construction of the program. And so it wasn't that we weren't funding it or charging fees. We were literally required to do so.
Right.
Right? And so the, the change has been a complete reshifting of, of what ASB programs, essentially how they're structured, which is, you know, the legislature wants those programs to continue, but doesn't want fees charged for students for whom that would be an obstacle. And I can, we all share that value. It's just like, so where, if we are not able to subsidize it by law, where does this? So districts are needing to be essentially creative in the way that I've discussed to provide that relief. So I, I'm sorry if I didn't directly answer your question, but that's an important context. It wasn't that we didn't want to do it. It was that the way the program was structured.
No, I understand. I appreciate that. I think, I think that's, I mean, I've worked a lot with kids. It's tremendously important that they all get to play.
Yeah.
Or do whatever they want. I have one last question and I won't, oh, we're almost, maybe I should defer.
Well, we're going to have time at the regular meeting too. Yes.
I just wanted to know about the levies. When we go out for the levy and you say it's capped, where do you get the numbers for that in fall?
Where do I get the numbers for the, for the?
When you have to go out for a levy and you're, you're limited to the amount you go out.
Yeah.
Or?
Yeah.
Where do you get those numbers from our fall intake of students? If it's?
Yeah. So OSPI basically publishes a model for all districts. And they've basically given us some short-term relief. They've, they've, you know, there was a law last year that said, hey, we're going to kind of hold you harmless for the short term. And so they didn't take any of our levy money in the short term. But in the long term, you know, to the extent that that, that law sunsets, or not sunset, yeah, I guess sunsets is the right term. Districts are kind of on their own. And so there is a calculator that OSPI produces. And the last couple of times I've taken a look at that, again, we're talking about into the future, right? Two, three years into the future.
Right.
I'm seeing like, oh, like this is a new set of considerations, not necessarily in year one, but as a, as a long-term consideration for the district.
And there's no extenuating circumstances if that number changes dramatically? You just have to stay at it from the beginning to the end?
Well, I mean, they could always change the law, which they have many, many times. You know, they've given us short-term relief. Sometimes they come back and say, well, we'll extend the relief. But when we do these exercises, we try to plan for the law we have, not the law we may have, right? And so I, without getting you too far in the weeds, I would just say, this is a new consideration.
Right.
For Kent.
That's why.
That could very well, I would be thrilled if, if it went away and we could work with our legislatures and say, hey, there's this and that. But as I'm looking at the models now, yeah, this is a consideration as we lose more and more students and our property values increase and all those considerations.
And it could go the other way too.
It could indeed.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
My question also kind of went off what Director Hamada was asking about these co-curriculars. And I know there was a lot of talk even in the boundary about providing activity buses and things like that for students so they would feel part of the school, which I think is important with social emotional learning. So I had a question for that, but we, I'm just going to lay them out and then we can maybe ask, talk about them when we get back. And then also, I asked this last year too. It would be helpful to see like the plans for each department. You know, I see the numbers and I see line items, but just understanding the plan so we can track and see where things are going would be very helpful. So those are two things I'm going to want to know when we get back.
Sure. Thank you.
At this time, we are going to adjourn the work session for an executive session to discuss the qualifications of an advocate for public employment and to discuss with legal counsel representing the district litigation or potential litigation to which the district is likely to become a party.
Evening. I have a regular meeting to order. I'd like to note that Dr. Ben Gerasim will be attending a meeting by phone, although she will be late and she is really disappointed to miss our first in-person meeting, but she'll be joining us later. Also, Chief Accountability Officer, Jewel Harmon is attending our meeting by phone this evening. Executive Director Melissa Laramie, will you please say the pledge?
I'd like to welcome our audience to our meeting this evening. This is a meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. I am sure the KSC board chair is my sentiment that we are so grateful to be back in our regular meeting room. Hold your microphone. Is that? Okay, I'll move over. The spacing. Okay, is that better? Okay. We welcome the public's participation in this board meeting and thank those of you who have come to the meeting and those who are viewing via live stream. The KSC staff has done its best to advise you of the governor's order from last Thursday requiring those in attendance to wear masks. Process for audience participation is as follows. The purpose of the board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from visitors. Those wishing to comment must complete a comment card and turn it in at the table in the hallway before the meeting begins or no later than Agenda Item 4.01, the Legislative Report. No cards will be accepted once the Legislative Report has begun. Visitors who've completed a comment card indicating a desire to speak to an agenda item will be called at that portion Visitors who've completed a comment card indicating a desire to speak to an agenda item will be called at that portion of the agenda. There is a brief delay in the live stream audio. We will allow for extra time for you to make your way to the board room if you are in an overflow room. When it is your turn to address the board, your mask needs to remain on while making your comment. Please state your name at the start of your testimony. Public comments will be heard after the opening, during preliminary communication from the audience at a specific agenda item, and during final communication from the audience. Students will be the first to speak on any topic. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. You will hear a timer when three minutes are up. Please do not use specific names of staff or students or personal identifiable information. Abusive public comments personally directed toward staff or board members will not be tolerated. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is too lengthy, obscene, or irrelevant. Per board procedure, written material to provide board members with background information should be submitted to the superintendent's office at least one week in advance of the meeting. Director Hamada, will you please read the land acknowledgement for us this evening?
We, we acknowledge we are gathered upon the ancestral lands of the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, who historically lived throughout the area between the Cascade Mountains and Puget Sound.
Thank you. Interim Superintendent Vela, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, President Daniels, a supplemental personnel report has been added to the consent agenda as item 10.08.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the supplemental personnel report added to the consent agenda as item 10.08.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving adding Agenda Item 10.08, the supplemental personal report, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstention? The motion carries. We're on to Agenda 2.0, preliminary communication from the audience. Miss Antello, did we have any comment cards?
Thank you.
Right. So we have, I will call your name. Kristi Hale. Yes, please. Thank you.
Kristi Hale, and today I happened to come across the fact that our bus was taken away. Nobody in my neighborhood knows, and they're expecting, oh, sorry, they're expecting my third grader to walk
Partially down Benson to get to school, which is a four-lane highway, and there's unsafe people on that road. And sometimes there's homeless people on that road, and it's, it's, I'm over a mile. And I'm, I just started barely letting my middle schooler with a friend walk some of that, and they expect me to send my third grader. And with no warning, so now I have to spend time making sure our kids get to school safely tomorrow. What if their parents aren't home? What do I do with them? Do I make sure, you know, get them home safely? It, it's just not right that they did this with no acknowledgement, no communication, nothing. We, they just took it away after all these years. I've been part of the school for nine years and there was no notification. And it's, it's not safe for my kid to walk to school down Benson. It's just not acceptable. And we need our bus back. It's not right. It's the safety of the kids. I, we have a kindergartner in our neighborhood with a health problem with her leg. She can't walk that with her second grade brother. Would you send your kindergartner or third grader or second grader walking down Benson, even if it's just a couple of blocks? I can guarantee none of you would send your kid walking on Benson. It's just not okay. And I just need you guys to think about the safety of the kids because it's just not acceptable. So, and I'll do the best I can to make sure kids are safe tomorrow because now none of them know that they're not getting to school tomorrow unless their parents are at the bus stop waiting. So, I'll do the job for the district because it didn't get taken care of. So I don't know what else to do. But, you know, there's going to be kids that probably don't go to, I can't support my school now because I was going to volunteer and help tomorrow. But now I have to make sure the kids are safe because the school district let them down and now they're going to be, what if their parents were work? And the kid walked to the bus stop. And now they're home alone because they have no way to get to school because nobody notified them. You know, it's just not okay. It's not okay. And now I can't help my school and I got to help these kids. So, that's what I have to say. And it's just not okay to put any kids walking on Benson. It's not all right. So, that's what I have to say.
Amy Peterson?
Sorry, trying to find my notes here. So my name is Jamie Peterson. A little background about myself. I graduated from Kent Lake in 2003 and now I have a child attending Horizon Elementary. I'm also an emergency room nurse that have been working since the day one of this pandemic. Sitting, setting all that aside, I'm here as a concerned parent first and foremost. Kent School District offered an online option for kids in the spring quarter for the original strain. My child was one of those online attendees and I chose to put my child in that not only for my child, but my child's neighbor's protection. My child has a higher risk of getting the COVID because the job that had chosen me. Oh, I am saddened and disappointed to hear that that was not an option this year. My concern is, is I went to open house yesterday and say my son's school is underprepared is an understatement. You are implementing the same safety protocols and even took some away for a virus that has mutated and filling up most of our critical access hospitals and critical care hospitals in Washington State. If anything, you should have stricter policies and be implemented for our child's safe, our children's safety. These kids, I fear, will not have a fighting chance in heck if our children's hospitals and our children's hospitals can be focused in the energy elsewhere. An online option was not available. I'm here to ask you why or to figure out the answers of why. I know my child is not the only one with apparent healthcare. I may be the one here today voicing my frustrations. Our elementary age children cannot get the vaccine. MIS is a real problem in children and it's showing in astronomical numbers in southern states. I cannot say this enough, your safety measures that are in place are not for a virus that has mutated. Now I know you can say there is online options available on K-12. You're right. I tried to enroll my child because of Washington State laws, I cannot un-enroll my child from Horizon until we are accepted into the program. But the program will not accept us until we are un-enrolled from Horizon Elementary. Isn't that quite the conundrum? So instead, I have to send my child to a school that is unprepared and the teachers cannot even answer the most simple of questions. The webpages are vague answers and there is no way, the classroom sizes of your students are three feet apart.
We are on to Agenda Item 3.01.
Point of order, a lot of people came in after you said the rules, your comment card needs to be in by 4.01, right?
Yes.
So if you want to speak, comment cards need to be turned in by 4.01 and you can just walk up during the meeting. Thank you.
And also just saying that that information is out there. All right, we're on to Agenda 3.01, the interim superintendent report.
Thank you, President Daniels. This evening, I am pleased to provide an update as we prepare for the first day of the 21-22 school year tomorrow. While the COVID-19 pandemic continues to present us with opportunities for communication, compassion, and collaboration. I want to begin this evening by sharing how proud I am of our staff who have continued working under immense uncertainty and constant change. I'm pleased to share several highlights this evening with you as we prepare for the new school year. Our school and district leaders continue to work through the details and information as new guidance emerges. Each adapting as needed while working together to support the return to in-person learning for all students. As educators, as we know from years of research, that our children thrive and learn best from compassionate leaders in the classroom and school buildings. I appreciate the cooperation and continued focus on students' learning and the safety of each member involved in current and ongoing labor negotiations. At the end of May, OSPI released information outlining requirements for continuous learning models in 2021-22. Among other requirements, any hybrid or online portion or option must not exceed a maximum of 30% of daily scheduled instructional time or less than two hours per day and requires a three-year commitment to be, to the model approved by the state. This is a major instructional shift from our previous hybrid and remote learning models. In addition to solidifying curriculum, schedules, enrollment, and obtained resources, implementing such offerings requires bargaining with multiple labor groups and approval from the board and the state. In the meantime, online-only programs continue to be available through OSPI as well as home-based learning or homeschooling for any KSC students. As of today, we are not seeing higher than usual choice transfers and families are continuing to enroll and register for the school year. Over the next year, we will explore full-time, long-term remote learning as an option for the students beginning in the fall of 2022-23. This exploration for a robust, sustainable, remote learning option will occur in partnership with KSC labor partners and provide families opportunities for input as well. We will provide information when it is available for enrolling in a future KSC virtual learning program. As we transition into the 2021-22 school year, our building leaders, teachers, and support staff will continue placing a united emphasis on social emotional wellness. At a board meeting last week, our student and family support services team was able to share in detail what this will look like by grade levels in, in more detail. However, for our teachers and principals, including 175 new KSC teachers and 19 new KSC principals or assistant principals, social-emotional learning is not the only priority this school year. Nearly 700 staff gathered together virtually last week to engage in our signature learning event, Talk. The Talk 2021 theme, "The Culture of Belonging," it begins with us, speaks to a fundamental KSC value with highly relevant topics such as empowering students to take control of their learning and equity. I found the sessions informative and student-focused. In addition, I felt they helped bring some much-needed enthusiasm and optimism to our KSC team members. Team KSD members have been preparing all summer for yet another unprecedented year. From our nutrition services team to our paras, our principals, and teachers, central admin leaders, and custodians alike have been working towards supporting students returning safely to in-person learning starting tomorrow, August 26. In fact, just this week, after reviewing the recent Washington State Patrol annual inspection results, OSPI recognized that our school district has again completed the inspection of school buses with exceptional results. For the past two years, the results in our district have been outstanding. I congratulate our transportation team for these excellent school bus inspection results and their continued support of student transportation safety. Some students will be starting school in person for the first time tomorrow. And next week, when kindergarten begins, some students are starting school in a new building at a new level and others are just joining us in our district. Tomorrow is a special day for two schools that marks the first day of learning in two voter-approved buildings from the 2016 bond. Both Kent Laboratory Academy and River Ridge Elementary School will open for learning tomorrow for the first time. I so appreciate the countless hours of work from staff this past year, their perseverance, and of course, our voters for making this moment in our district's history possible. I also look forward to and appreciate the time board members will spend joining me on school visits during the first two days of school. Thank you in advance. I am confident that our school leaders believe as much as I do that communication with our students, families, staff, and community is critical to family engagement and student success. I continue to witness our leaders work through the challenges and opportunities this pandemic environment continues to present. I'm excited for the school year and working together as a community to support all students. In closing, I want to say thank you again to our staff, our students, our families, and our community partners. Thank you in advance for extending kindness and compassion towards each other as we all continue to experience this historical time together. Have a healthy, safe, and positive school year. I look forward to seeing you soon. This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have during the board report and discussion portion of our meeting agenda this evening. Thank you, President Daniels.
I want to make sure that all of the comment cards are turned in as we have come to our legislative update, Agenda Item 4.0. So at this time, all comment cards need to be turned in. Everyone turn them in. Please give it to the center. Thank you. Right, we're on to our legislative update. Public comment submission is now closed and I will be providing this update in Director Ben Gadasman's absence. This is a short explainer about ESER funds. And so that was provided, so the 2020, the 2020 legislative session, the Washington State Legislature prioritized and directed most of the federal funds to the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief referred to as the ESER. Through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the breakdown of funds, there are federal stimulus funds that Washington State received for pre-K through 12 education, which fell into four main categories: allocations, reserves, learning recovery reserve, and administration. The funds were awarded directly to LEAs, local education agencies, which include public school districts, state tribal education compact schools, and charter schools. The majority of ESER 2 and 3 funds are allocated directly to local education agencies via a federal funding formula. Through ESER 3 funds, for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, known as IDEA, are also allocated for K-12 schools and preschools to meet the academic and well-being needs of students with disabilities. These funds are directed by the legislature for specific education supports, which are, which are as follows. Summer programs, before and after-school programs, community-based organizations serving students, students experiencing homelessness, dual-language grants, transition services for students with individualized education programs ages 21 and higher, and summer meals, career and technical education, graduation pathways, institutional education stabilization, and teacher residency study. These funds were approximately $200 million totaled, which equaled approximately $200 per student. And it looks as though these funds capped at 0.5% of total ESER funds, about 7 million, are intended to support the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction in the management, oversight, and operation of the many federal grants and programs that will run over the next two to three years utilizing these significant investment efforts. There is a stakeholder survey, I'm sorry, stakeholder survey that's available, asking what your priorities are. OSPI seeking information from stakeholders on potential uses for the Learning Recovery Reserve Funds. And that survey will be available on the OSPI, on, there's an online survey available that will close on August 31st, 2021, and it's available in English and Spanish. And that concludes the legislative information that I have. We are on to Agenda Item 5.0, recognition of our maintenance facilities and custodial staff. KPA Association President, Dr. Rosa, is it Villarreal? Did I pronounce that right? Hi, could you please, okay, thank you.
Good evening, President Daniels, members of the board, interim superintendent Vela and Miss Antello. I am Dr. Rosa Villarreal. I am the proud principal of Kent Elementary and the 2021-22 Kent Principals Association President. I have the distinct honor tonight to share praise and thanksgiving for an amazing group within Team KSD. While we always appreciate our custodians and maintenance team within KSD team members, with COVID, we are more grateful than ever. to all of the, for all of the work they lead in our buildings. But of course, their dedication and attention to detail is what we've come to expect in the Kent School District. I have witnessed firsthand how our custodians have gone the extra mile during this pandemic. My colleagues across the district share how maintenance teams have been working nonstop to get ready for students and to have teachers back in our classrooms and keep them there this year. Keeping our schools and our buildings continuously clean is one of the most critical pieces in a very complex process of getting and keeping schools open during the pandemic. When it comes to preparing our school buildings for use, the custodians serve on the front line. Our custodians and maintenance staff are in the buildings day in and day out, night in and night out, on the weekends and during holidays when we're all at home, ensuring that the facilities are ready for our children and our staff for the next day. Our custodians and maintenance staff are completing their routine tasks and so much more to help prevent the potential spread of viruses. We are eternally grateful for their selfless service. Our custodians specifically are not just staff members, they are family members at our schools. They know everybody, they help everybody, every student, every staff member, every parent, and K S D staff members who come into our buildings. They're an integral part of each school. I would like to share an enthusiastic appreciation for a few of the over one hundred and eighty folks. I, of course, have the privilege of working with Susan Cecil, our head custodian at Kent Elementary. I had the privilege of working with Keith Dugan, who went on to, is now at Kent Ridge High School as the head custodian. John Hasty and his brother Tim and Lynette Brown have been painting all of our parking lots, stripes, all of the playgrounds. They are gorgeous. When you are there this next week, you're going to see beauty. Larry Huff works as an alarm technician, Jeremy Lee, a security alarm technician, Conrad Shaw, a boiler technician. We got a new boiler a couple of years ago. It makes all the difference. Darren Blackwell, working on our heating and ventilations. Darren Schmidt, every time we have a plumbing issue, he is there helping us. Terry Nishayes, grounds lead in irrigation, and Ezekiel Moreno, a groundskeeper. There's a couple of folks that have been working double duty as they close one school and open another. Because it's wonderful, we're opening schools, but some people are putting in long hours. Tim Bass, between K P A and River Ridge, and Del Sorino, between Kent Valley and Kent Laboratory Academy. Super thankful for them. And the last two, we'll give a shout out to Guy Byers, the head custodian at Meridian, and Gary Newsom, the head custodian at Kent Lake. So in closing, as we prepare for the first day of school tomorrow, August twenty-six, for grades one through twelve, on behalf of our Kent Principals Association, Team K S D and our school board, I want to share a hearty thank you to each and every K S D custodian and maintenance team member under the direction of Gordon Cook. Thank you for all you have done to help us return safely to schools, and I invite all of Team K S D, as you see any of our outstanding team members, custodians and maintenance team, please give them a huge thank you. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful, fun, and healthy start to the school year. Thank you.
We are on to our Agenda Item Six-point-zero presentations, and at this time, I would like to call on Interim Superintendent Vela to introduce Mr. R.
Thank you, President Daniels. I'd like to introduce you, Mr. Ben Rarick, our Executive Director of Budget and Finance, to be for tonight. Good evening, board members. Tonight, the board is being asked to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget in accordance with statute prior to the beginning of school for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This proposed adoption follows a process of three budget work sessions through the spring and early summer, a technical review process by the Puget Sound Educational Service District, advertisement of the budget proposal, and finally, a fourth full work session this evening, five-thirty. During the work session, the board received a detailed overview of the proposal and had an opportunity to discuss their priorities, well, some long-term strategic considerations of the budget going forward, some of which were reflected on Slide Four of the presentation. For the purposes of this presentation, it is not my intent to repeat all the detailed content that we went over in the work session, which took over an hour just at five-thirty this evening. But rather, I will provide some highlights of the F-one-ninety-five budget proposal and share with the board and the community the key documents that they have for their viewing and the key statutory actions that are proposed to take this evening. In your board packets and also available to the public, you have the following documents. First, a copy of the F-one-ninety-five budget document. This is required for public viewing and is technically what we send to OSPI, but it's a very technical format. And so as a result of that, we have created what we call the K S D budget book. The budget book is also available in your packet, and that is constructed on our part to communicate to you're more of a budget lay audience in the community. It contains key charts and graphs regarding the budget, many of which you saw this evening in the work session, as well as detailed historical data and information not otherwise found in the F-one-ninety-five. So a couple of highlights from the budget book is you'd be able to go in there and see historical enrollment data, for example, historical spending and revenue activity in the budget over a period of time. So the the budget book can provide some history that the F-one-ninety-five does not necessarily provide. You also have in your packets a copy of two separate resolutions. If I could go over those with you briefly. Resolution sixteen-ten, providing spending authority of the school district and the district's five funds. Those funds include the general fund, capital projects fund, the debt service fund, the transportation vehicle fund, and the A S B fund, all, as well as adopting the F-one-ninety-five F, the forecast for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And those were the five funds that I referred to in the work session, and we went over some of the key highlights of of each of each budget. You also have in front of you Resolution sixteen-oh-nine, which provides a small $150,000 budget extension for the debt service fund for the reasons we discussed earlier this evening. Finally, you have a copy of my PowerPoint, which took us over an hour to cover this evening, which I hope is a helpful, high-level rendering of some of the technical detail of the budget and highlights many of the key issues that we're focusing on in the Kent community as we continue to secure our long-term financial health. I should note that the PowerPoints that were created as part of the three previous budget work sessions in the spring and early summer are also available on the K S D website under the Budget and Finance tab. Slides twelve, fifteen, and sixteen of the PowerPoint this evening provide high-level overviews of the proposals for the five funds, which we went over this evening, with detailed emphasis on the general fund. For the record, the proposed general fund spending authority is $485.4 million, and the total authority for all five funds comes at approximately $573.4 million. Finally, Slide Three of the presentation provides an overview of the statutory roles that you are fulfilling today, which I'm going to highlight. I can't seem to. Of the statutory roles you are fulfilling today, which includes adoption of the budget, adoption of the budget extension, and fulfillment of the requirement to conduct a public hearing in accordance with state regulations. I wanted to take a moment to step back from the details and speak to the big picture of the budget, if I may. Since coming to the district in two thousand and eighteen, I've made it a priority to help make the complex data of our budgeting process a more understandable tool a audience, to board members and decision-makers in the district. And although there's a lot of technical information before you this evening, I think I can summarize the budget proposal and tell our budget story in Kent in a few summary statements. First is that many of you remember where we were four years ago. After ending fiscal year two thousand and seventeen with a negative $5.7 million fund balance, the fiscal year twenty-two budget proposal in some ways represents the culmination of a four-year turnaround for the district. K S D now has a stable fund balance. In July, it was approximately $60 million. And this year, we will spend approximately what we take in in revenue. The work now turns to maintaining the long-term financial health of the district rather than recovery. In the couple of years following the general fund deficit, the emphasis was on recovery, so that meant austerity measures and keeping spending in line. This meant consecutive years where we spent far less than we took in as a district. Now, in our current state of financial health, the district continues to pivot to a more normalized spending pattern, which has included increasing staffing allocations and non-salary allocations for schools at each level of our system, including elementary, middle, and high schools. This, in effect, has reversed some of the budget reductions we took earlier in our journey. Although you notice that the budgeted staffing has not increased, our hiring has increased, and you will see that reflected in the increase in actual staffing in our monthly financial statements. This is also reflected on Slide Eighteen of your presentation. Going forward, Kent is among many districts facing a new set of budget challenges. First, the pandemic significantly has had a significant negative impact on our enrollment over the last two years. And of course, I and others eagerly await our enrollment numbers from tomorrow and the first few weeks of school. The state has provided temporary funding relief, but long-term enrollment drives virtually all the revenue in K S D. So continued loss of enrollment may require a course correction for the district. Second, substantial Esser funding has opened up some opportunities to expand programming to hopefully mitigate the effects of COVID-19 on our student population. We must, of course, resist the temptation to rely on these short-term funds for long-term financial obligations. And finally, the best we can say is, as we encounter these challenges, we face these well-prepared with a stable fund balance and a watchful eye. That completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Rarick, I really enjoyed the presentation, the work session, and I think a lot of care was put into this budget. I particularly liked that you sent out some questionnaires to the board to see what their priorities were, and they were included in a lot of the budget items. Particularly, it was a personal concern to me that it was directed in school to the kids. When I'm one, you fulfilled that. The S E L, or trying to get more social-emotional help for our kids. I learned tonight that the coaches, which are definitely academic coaches, are also geared up to do a lot of social-emotional support, and that's also put into a lot of the programming we've done for our extracurricular activities to help our kids have no fees. So if that was a barrier in trying to get them to participate. So I see a lot of good things that came in this budget, and I thank you for your work and your stuff.
Appreciate the comment.
I was going to offer similar sentiments, Mr. Rarick. Thank you. I always enjoy hearing your presentations. Like, I feel like I'm getting a lot of information about what's going on in the district. I really appreciate commitment to students. I know several times I've talked about student fees, I've talked about A S B, and the importance of making sure that students get what they need without having to pay for it. We need to be making sure that students have access to programming. So to me, I love seeing that in this budget. And I'm sure in the future, there's other things as we look at mental health. I love seeing contracts for mental health support. I would love to see us do more wraparound services, school-based health centers, et cetera, in the future, because I think wraparound services are important and getting the mental health services into the schools, not necessarily just contracting. But I would love for us to see more of that in the future, but I want to thank you for making a very student-centered budget, and I really do appreciate that and your hard work you and your team have done. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment.
I'm going back to the questions I had before when we ran out of time, and then I have added another one. So a superintendent search is in this budget, yes, the costs related to that?
This budget can cover the cost of a certain defendant's search.
Okay, and then going back to my questions from earlier, just, and this is something I asked last year too, just understanding the plans. I mean, I've looked at that one hundred and eighty-seven-page document too. But just understanding, like, you know, obviously, when you create above budget, you get numbers from somewhere. So it's like regular expenditures on things, but then also new things. And it would help to see more specifics. And then going back to the S E L item, and are we, have we considered activity buses for students so they're more engaged in their schools?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you did ask that one. I forgot. Yeah, so in response to that, so that is a key consideration in the Esser mini-grant kind of construct that anytime we, you know, if a school contemplates some sort of after-school activity, it's very likely going to have some sort of transportation implication. So transportation has been discussed as a cost center in those proposals. That's all the detail I have at this point, that we would, the district would be receptive to proposals which included requests for funding for transportation.
I would just be mindful of optics where certain schools would have activity buses and others wouldn't. That would, that would look like that there's some favoritism going on, and that if proposals are coming in without, that we would make sure, hey, these other schools have activity buses in their proposals, you should do that too, because I want to be mindful that certain schools don't feel like they're getting less than other schools.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate that. I'll take note of that comment.
Yeah, and I mean, I understand there are students, especially it's up at Kent Lake, that they live very far. And I would, you know, in the olden days, when I went to school, I was forty-five minutes away from my school. So we had activity buses, so that helps stay engaged. And then, yeah, plans, how can I see plans for each department?
Yeah, so I think that we may need to have a longer discussion about that as a team. I'll give you kind of my brief answer and then maybe some food for thought. So the brief answer is probably the most detailed information I can provide you this evening is on page seventy-ish of the budget book in which the budgetary authority awards are broken down by cost center, which is the lowest level of detail that we, that's not even contained in the F-one-ninety-five, but we provide because our community wants it. I don't know exactly if that kind of aligns with what you're talking about in terms of a plan. And I don't want you to misconstrue my comments. This is not pushback. I'm just kind of trying to stay in my lane as a budget person, okay? Because when I'm dealing with the budget and the budget authority and getting the budget authority approved by the board, that doesn't include operational plans by community. That statutory construct doesn't, right? So we don't construct it that way. If that was a need of the board, which it may or may not be, I don't presuppose to know, that's probably more than a budget conversation and really pertains to the accountability relationship between the board and the superintendent and the grain size of monitoring that the board wishes to have vis-à-vis the superintendent. And so I wouldn't be able to answer that question either way, really, you know? I mean, I can provide expenditure data at a grain size, but but I suspect that what you're talking about in terms of a plan is probably more dynamic than that. So I hope that's, that's the best I can do.
That's very helpful. So that's good to know for when we start again for the next year.
I also just want to say thank you. I have been here along the journey of recovery, and so I know it's taken a lot, a lot of work from many, many people in the district, a lot of sacrifices, and I just really want to say how much we appreciate our community members that have stepped up to serve in our committee. But we really, really appreciate the fact that we are in a much better and much different position than we were quickly. And so thank you so much for all of the work that has gone into that. I know you guys have gone above and beyond, and it is much, much appreciated. Thank you.
Excuse me, President Daniels. Interim Superintendent Vela, members of the- Hi, and I'm Superintendent Bella, members of the board, Mrs. Antello. I. Director Vingadassam had questions that didn't have an opportunity to be asked during the work session, and I wanted to ask them on her behalf. She typed them into the chat. She asked what percent of the eighteen million dollar fund balance. To previous expenses in twenty-three, twenty-four. So is that five percent less more? So how does our fund balance compare to previous fund balance amounts?
Can you try that again, Jewel?
Um, she said, what percent is the eighteen million dollar fund balance to previous expenses? Is it five percent?
Okay.
Is it less more?
I see. Right, so so if, and again, we had this conversation in the work session insofar as we're talking about that final year fund balance. I certainly hope that we would not be there. That's based on projections of. Right, so but if we were at eighteen percent, that would not, or eighteen million, that would not constitute a five percent fund balance. Does that answer your question, Jewel, on behalf of Director Vingadassam?
Yes, thank you. I think since she's not here to respond, I think just having the answer on the record is important.
Yeah, okay.
The second question is, given budget priorities, are we exploring every learning opportunity now to spend in twenty-two and twenty-three? As we have so much to spend per S R by twenty-twenty-four?
Yes. That's a good, that is a good question. Well, they're all good questions, but that is a timely question. Yeah, the answer to that is yes. I propose to our earlier conversation about the nature of the S R funding, the size of it, and the length of time we have to spend it. These next two years are important. And it is. There are a lot of people in this district engaged in the activity of building up those programs, and in some sense. I wish the federal government had given us a little more time. Because it's a fair sum of money in a fairly tight window, and then it goes away. But to answer the director's question on the record, yes, that that remains perhaps my. It's certainly in my top three priorities, if not. I would say it's one or two. Because it is both a challenge and an opportunity for all of the larger districts in our region, not just Kent. How to how to do this responsibly and plan for for the future.
Thank you. She has one last question. Aggressively removing splits where possible. What does where possible mean? How many were not removed?
Okay. So I don't know that we'll be in a position to answer that until maybe a week or two from now, when we actually see the class sizes manifest. And if I have to go any deeper than this, I'm going to invoke Dr. Behringer here, but. The intent of the aggressive investment in early grades was to eliminate. Most, of course, you can't predict what the classes will look like. Four months ago when we're constructing this budget, right? So you're essentially putting allocations forth. In hopes that you're predicting enrollment correctly and that you will be able to eliminate as many as you as you can. And then you see the real whites of the eyes when the students come up, and then you're dealing with the actual split situations, and then you see. So I don't know that we have a factual answer to that yet, but we should pretty soon. Wait, is not his head? That is correct.
So I'll say thank you on Director Vingadassam's behalf.
Thank you.
Mr. Eric, one one thing came to mind when you were talking about that. The grants that we're going to give out, are they going to apply for different schools? It that is a well-advertised item for each school that they. You know, they have things in mind that they can apply, and is there a deadline on that, or is that just ongoing, you know, for their grant applications?
Yeah, I'm, Dr. Herman, are you able to respond to this question?
I am. I apologize. I heard the question during the work session, and I was having technical difficulties speaking at the time. So we are beginning the advertisement process. Actually, next week, we've vetted the, we're saying it's an application, but it's really a form for schools to fill out and describe their programs. They are going to be open to all buildings, and they will be on a a rolling acceptance. So there's not a deadline. The goal is to. Fund and support as many programs as possible. Ideally, it would be wonderful if we had a program operating in every single building. Because we have S R funding to support this. We do have, there's a question there to ask if it's a single-year program or if they have interest in discontinuing into year two and three as we have funding. But it is open to every school to have an opportunity. And as. Executive Director Rar expressed earlier, what is offered or what is funded in those programs depends upon the needs of the school and the school specific. So and that depends on what the data or what gaps that they see are are. Largest or they'd like to address for their students. And it could be academic, it could be social emotional, it could be a combination. Any of those pieces. But yes, they are open to all schools in Kent School District. And there's not a deadline to apply. So it's quite possible that they want to do something in the second semester. I mean, not the first, and they still have that opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Herman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Eric. Appreciate it. At this time, we are on to your agenda, item seven, which is our public hearing. So we are going to, at this time, open our public hearing. For comments. So this time, our public hearing is open for comments with regards to our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two district budget and twenty-twenty-twenty-one budget extension. I do apologize. There is one I couldn't read that. So this is, I'm gonna call on Angela. I apologize. Is it Dob or Dab? Okay, thank you so much.
Just just to let me make a quick question or comment, because. Most of my questions are just answered by the gentleman with the budget information. And so, but. I'll go home and print the information that I need to get. Satisfy the reason that I'm here. But then it brought me to a couple other questions about. The budget and how. How you all operate. This is the first time I've ever attended a school board meeting. And that's having kids have gone through high school and college and now grandkids. So. So forgive me for not really knowing how everything all works, but I suspect I'm probably not alone. But just one thing, as a as a parent slash grandparent. A hundred and eighty-four pages. Of a budget kind of blows my mind. And so. In in just an effort for you all to help make, help us make better sense of it. If you could drill it down to even just a couple pages. That would help tremendously because for all of us, it's just important for us to know what's going on. That's why we're here. To know. What y'all are doing for our kids and with our money. So I do appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
This time, we will be closing our public hearing. We are on to agenda item eight, which is a discussion amongst the board of directors. With return to school questions and concerns, and it looks like we do have. A couple of comment cards for that particular item of the agenda. So. I'll go ahead and call in Megan Carter.
Hello, I am a parent at Emerald Park Elementary. I'm also the P T S A president there. Also a nurse and was part of the back-to-school task force that was created right when COVID or right after COVID started. Unfortunately, we've not met since April, but I was part of that process. I also have two kids. Who are in special ed, one who is medically fragile. And have really been given no options for their education this year. We've been working. At a school level with our school to try to figure out some plan that will work for them. But hearing from the district that we should just pull our kids out and unenroll them and send them somewhere else. Is really, really unacceptable. It's also not an option for special ed kids. You can't just take an I E P and replicate it at K twelve or Connections Academy. I can't have a one-on-one para for my daughter. At Connections Academy. That's just not an option. So the reality of having hearing people from the district. They have board meetings that we should just unenroll our kids and find somewhere else for them to go. First of all, it's illegal for kids who have I E Ps. You have to serve them. And second of all, it's just really disheartening as somebody that has been heavily involved in the district, and I put everything into our school. So to be told that I should yank my kids out of their community. Just because they can't medically attend right now is really, really upsetting. And I really just want Kent to be better. I hear lots of excuses about why it can't happening with bargaining and that kind of thing, but as a parent, none of that matters to me. It's not an excuse. Lots of districts are doing this. Bigger districts are doing this. More diverse districts are doing this. None of those things are an excuse, and we did it last year. There's no reason not to offer kids their education. So I just really beg you guys to figure it out and do better. This pandemic is not getting better. I get Department of Health requests every day as a nurse to go to different hospitals because they're running out of healthcare providers. It's not getting better. So we need to figure it out, and we need to figure it out right now. I don't care what's happening for next year. We don't need an online version for next year. We need it right now, tomorrow. And unfortunately, there's no plan for my sixth grader to have any kind of first day of school experience tomorrow, because we couldn't get it figured out. My daughter might have a few minutes where she gets to say hi to her class on a computer, because I've facilitated it. But my sixth grader is just out of luck. So I really, I'm begging you guys to really figure it out. It's time.
All right, Kristy Pidiot.
Good evening. I'm here representing the Kent Education Association. Members of the board, President Daniels and Intern Superintendent Bella. I have come to you tonight to speak about the well-being while I represent. But to speak on behalf of all K S D staff. I'm concerned that the district does not have a plan for staff who need to quarantine due to exposure or a positive result to the COVID virus. As I'm sure that you're aware, we have had already on day one, some staff members who have tested positive for the virus. After working the last two workshop days in our buildings. This, of course, has caused those staff members to quarantine for a minimum of ten days. And the staff who are in close contact with them for over fifteen minutes to be required to be tested. Because the district has no plan for these scenarios, staff are using up their twelfth days of sick leave at a very rapid pace. And the students haven't even attended school yet. Once sick leave is used up, there is no option but to take leave without pay. This will surely be a hardship on employees, in particular our classified staff who work at the building level. In addition, we have learned today that there is no plan for students who won't wear a mask in the classroom or who refuse to. This will surely result in more positive cases as well. My ask of you is that you encourage K S D to prioritize a plan for all K S D staff to have a way not to use up all of their sick leave. Due to the worldwide pandemic. Some solutions could be to allow staff to work remotely. As we've seen tonight, it works. Or another suggestion is to grant COVID leave to all employees. Thank you.
Rose McAvoy.
Good evening, Kent School Board. I appreciate you taking all of our comments. I was not planning to be here this evening. I was planning to spend the evening with my children who have not been in this school building for. A year and a half and to make a fun evening of their last day of summer vacation before one of my children goes back into the building. The other child. Will be staying home for the foreseeable. But this afternoon, I became privy to some information that moved me to come to this meeting instead of spending the evening with. My children celebrating the end of the school year. Our school, we are parents with children at Sunrise. We actually joined the district at the beginning of twenty-nineteen school year and participated in the classroom. For about half the year before everything went sideways. During the time we were away from school, I remained involved in the P T A, and I've recently taken over as the social media. Chairperson for the Sunrise Elementary School P T A. As a side note, before I get to my point, I have made it a point in the last few weeks to do everything I can. To get information to the parents of our school, because there has been no information coming from this board or the district. That we can provide to families to assure them that somebody knows what the heck is going on. So this afternoon, I was having a conversation with our P T A co-president. To find out that teachers have approached the P T A on behalf of the classrooms that are portables at our school. Who have no air filtration systems in their classrooms the day before children return to the school. We were assured all along that our school building was ready and. Better than many buildings to receive children back onto campus due to in the beginning of the twenty-nineteen school year. Being the recipient of a brand-new H V A C system, which was capable of having the MERV eight air filtration system. But we have buildings on our campus that are not part of that H V A C system that have no air filtration systems. In those classrooms. That is unacceptable. And I'm. The fact that this conversation was happening between parents and teachers the day before school is completely ludicrous. It should not have been happening. The fact that this conversation had to happen at all is unacceptable. This should have been handled for our school and every other school that's in this situation months ago. We have funding for schools to put safety equipment into the buildings, and it was not done. It's unacceptable. And so I am here tonight to express what is clearly anger and frustration. That we are even having this conversation the night before school, and I have not taken my children to get some ice cream or play a board game right now. But I am standing here telling you that I am here representing many people who are absolutely done. With what's going on in this district. Thank you.
Mark Hargrove.
Evening, I'm Mark Hargrove. I live now almost in the Kent Lake area, on the far eastern edge of the district, where we lived for twenty-seven years in Covington. Raised two daughters in the Kent School District, Crestwood, Matson, and Kentwood. And I was a state representative for eight years, finished that a couple of years ago. In fact, I see a behind the masks, I see a political opponent and friend. And a former legislative staff person I worked with, and so it's kind of fun to see some of these, some of these faces. I just wanted to to say that I believe the governor has put you in a difficult position. These mask mandates and the shot mandates that they may cause some significant problems. You may see teachers that are not willing to put up with that or bus drivers or so on, and could cause you significant problems. Aside from that, you got parents and students that are very concerned about the conditions that their kids are coming that going to have to go back to school and with their masks and so on. So I do, I wanted to bring those things up because. The mood is different this time around. I was in, in the last couple of days, I'm in eight or ten businesses. And this is the first place where I was required to wear a mask. So people are treating this a little bit differently. I think we're going to see. A different mood and and you may run into some more obstacles that that you need to do. And the reason I bring that up is because. The governor is. And the reason I bring that up is because the governor is, he's in his bubble of people and Olympic and stuff. And he needs to hear from you. He needs to know that there is resistance from the people that you are serving and so on. So I urge you to, to, to push back a little bit, make sure he knows that there are problems and that people are not just going along with things the way that they have in the past. One little aside, I recommend if you haven't done so in recently, is go visit another state. There are a lot of people left this state. Well, it doesn't even have to be so far as that, but, but other places where kids were in school all year round, played sports all year round and so on and safely. And anyway, just realize we are not the norm. We are, we are kind of interested here. So go see, go visit another state, see how things can be and so on. And then convey that to our governor. And so I wrote down something else, but I can't read my writings. So anyway, thank you for letting me speak and it's a pleasure to be here.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's, thank you, but speaking out of order like that is not, is not acceptable. So I appreciate it though, but thank you. All right, so this time we will open the board discussion on this. I remember Director Benno, did you have some?
Yes, I wanted to kind of bring up some of the things that we have heard. I know that we voted, because I was told, well, you all voted on a back-to-school plan. And I said, wait a minute, when did I vote on a back-to-school plan? And I was reminded that there was an OSPI checklist that we voted on. And I didn't realize that that was our back-to-school plan. So I had some questions specifically about like, things like the Back-to-School Task Force, which I heard haven't met, but were supposed to meet over the summer. And so like, getting all these questions from families and community about plans, even questions I submitted, the answers I got were basically, well, here it is on the website. And that offended me a little bit because like, I, I saw it on the website. I guess I just wanted a little bit more rationale and I wanted to bring it up for us to discuss because so many families had concerns. And I kind of wanted to just clarify like some of those concerns and things like community input. I know Seattle did a forum for families about back-to-school. And I just kind of wanted to know what kind of communications went out to families? Was there robocalls, things like that? Because I know that it's a huge concern. We start tomorrow and there's just a lot of families with those concerns. I agree that I didn't really love the, well, then they can just go online because it's just, we're talking about enrollment. And so it's just like, oh, we're going to ask people to leave, to do a virtual option with already declining enrollment. So I just had some concern, I just wanted to bring those up and just kind of get some clarifications. Just because I want for myself to kind of clarify and solidify some of that. But also so that whoever's watching, families who have concerns, I can see that besides going to the website, like, we know that some of the school locations are not necessarily getting the information that they need for families. I know Skyward was off until, was it today or yesterday? So families couldn't get access to buses. So like, I have a lot, I have a lot of the same concerns and I sent emails about it and I got some responses. But I just wanted a little bit more clarification, which is why I asked for this to be on the agenda. For, I know we can't really necessarily make decisions because this is a discussion piece, but that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Thank you, Director Benno. I'm going to address first the first part, which is additional rationale around the back-to-school piece and then other pieces around communication in general that we have been putting out. And so I'm going to ask Executive Director Melissa Larrabee to share a little bit more about what we've done around the back-to-school and some other pieces on communication. So Melissa.
President Daniels, members of the Board, Interim Superintendent Bella Mousantello, good evening. I tried to capture all of the questions, so please help me if I miss any. The Back-to-School Task Force was a requirement from OSPI for the 2021 school year. And we did meet regularly, we had subcommittees. And we expressed in the last meeting that that was sunsetting because at the time, at the end of the school year, we did not have guidance from the Department of Health as to what the requirements would be for 2122. And a lot of the things that were in place were not going to be in place for this year. We knew by the same statute and agreements that had been bargained for remote learning and hybrid learning at that time. So that's the Back-to-School Task Force. We did express that in the final meeting with the task force and let them know. And then we communicated over the summer as we got information from Department of Health. We have sent multiple communications, we've updated the website. We did update it for the summer learning program. So I think it was 36 or 34 of our schools had summer learning programs. And so we communicated directly with those families that were participating. And then most recently, in the last couple of weeks, yes, we have sent two specific communications that did include going home in the home language identified in Skyward for those families, except for Arabic, because the translations are not correct. So we've been working with our community and we don't send those in Arabic. We send it in English and sent emails, robocalls, and then text messages for those who have opted in. But text messaging, you have to opt in to receive those. And so those, and then that included one that we sent today, which included links to Interim Superintendent Bella's message and information, which was done in English and in Spanish. And so we sent those as well. As for the Skyward being off, not seeing, I don't, Dr. Harmon may be able to speak to that. But were there any questions that I missed?
No, I do have follow-up. For me, being a high school teacher for 20 years, what I've learned with my freshmen is I have to repeatedly tell them and repeatedly show them and repeatedly guide them for information. And it's not just freshmen. I think that for our community, I'm getting a lot of messages because they don't feel heard and they're not feeling like they're getting the information. So for me, my thought process would be, well, what aren't we doing? Instead of just blaming families, like, go here, you're not doing this. So I feel like for us, we need to be doing more to make sure that the families are feeling heard because right now they're not feeling heard. And, and I understand about the OSPI not requiring the, the Back-to-School Task Force. But also to me, it's just like, oh, OSPI says we don't need you, so we're not going to use you. But you had a community of people who were willing to participate and be part of the conversations that you just turned off. And I don't, I don't feel good about that because if there's a group of people who want to be part of the district and support us in our plans, why would we tell them no? So for me, my brain is going towards, I want to support families and I always want to do that. I just remember being in school and not knowing English and people treating me like an idiot because I didn't understand. Well, I didn't understand because I didn't know the language. And also just because you send something doesn't mean it's in a way that I know or understand it. And so I think we need to be cognizant of like the communication that families are receiving. I know you're doing a great job, they're doing the best that you can to do that. But if families are saying they're not understanding and they're not finding the information, they're not wrong, right? And so it's really important that we keep that in mind as school starts tomorrow, that many families feel unheard. And then also thinking about our students with disabilities or students who have IEPs or need one-on-ones, like, there's a lot of things to consider. I feel like we didn't utilize the community or the resources that we've had over the summer the best that we could. So that's, I guess, my feedback, my thought processes as I think about the many, many families I'm trying to respond to that aren't necessarily feeling like they're being heard.
I'd just like to kind of piggyback on this discussion too is, I'm not really privy to understand why during the summer that we don't have somebody answering phones, at least in, in every building. Or when I had a question come up, I would get answering machines. And nothing irritates me more than getting answering machines and never really getting a person. And I'm wondering, I realized this has been a crazy year and everybody needed a break. But I also think rotating more staff in the building in the summer, when it's such a very, very different year, to get somebody to say personal information. I, I think there is quite a bit on our websites and everything like that. But when I go from one link to another link to another link, I, it just doesn't work. It doesn't feel warm and fuzzy to me like I'm communicating. It's just like, things are out there. And yes, I've gotten all kinds of texts and everything like that. But again, that one, I'm, I'm just a one-on-one person. And I've been very, very frustrated that I couldn't be out in the schools all year long. And I was out at the Kent Lake freshman orientation. And I want to assure you that that was so well-run, so well-done. And participated and, and kids were wearing masks. The staff was engaged, they were energized. And everything that I observed as I walked around was done with the utmost of care to our students. I hear all the things that are going on tonight that are in the back of your mind. And I, as a parent and a grandparent, I can certainly understand that too. And I just think somehow we've missed the buck about not really having that kind of wraparound services for our parents to feel better about that. And I think we can find some ways to do that. And I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and, you know, see what we can do to change that. Thank you.
I, I want to kind of join on what my other two colleagues have said. I'm kind of pissed off. You know, I voted no on that checklist because of the previous year. But I support our staff and I want to be cognizant that there are people working really hard to get our buildings ready and there are teachers working really hard and there's principals working really hard. But I find myself in a position where, you know, August 4th, there was a discussion about back-to-school because I added it to the agenda, not because it was seen as necessary to give to people. Director Benno added it to the agenda tonight, requested it for the agenda tonight, as he said. So we, I, we are getting all kinds of emails. I hear all of you, teachers are concerned. I don't know what's going to happen. My own child starts school tomorrow. I don't know what's going to happen if someone in his class. I'm a board director, I don't know what's going to happen if someone in his class contracts COVID and he has to be out of school. I don't know if there's online option for him. Okay, no, now I learned, I learned something right now. So I understand this is an unusual year. We've had, we have an interim superintendent who I believe is doing his best. But there, a whole summer went by with no communication. And, you know, to find out, I'm, you know, what I'm hearing tonight, you know, when we vote on things as a board and this is a philosophy and maybe this is something that needs to change. But I've really been thinking about this a lot. You know, we vote on something and maybe we vote on something unanimous, but it's recommended to us from staff. But what ends up happening is then it's like, well, the board voted and it was approved. And I'm just feeling a little upset. I am kind of, I'm shaking right now when I'm hearing some of these stories that people have shared tonight. I'm a parent too. A lot of you in this room are parents or educators. And I don't want to diminish the fact that people are working hard to get kids in school. But I also just feel like, you know, that's why I pushed at that meeting on May 26th. Are we having more meetings? Is this, this, is this it? Because a checklist didn't do it for me at that time. And I'm trying to do my best to balance my responsibilities of being supportive of staff who are working really hard and in, sometimes in untenable situations because they've been thrust into roles that quite quickly with a very short turnaround. And I'm so grateful for that. But I'm also really pissed off because I feel like maybe work wasn't even done in May, June, July. I mean, I'm just at a loss, I'm just at a loss.
If I may. I first want to say thank you to all of our directors' comments. I want to start with Director Benno. I appreciate what you said at the piece about the communication. It's not just about sending something out on paper or even on a link. I appreciated what you said about your background and growing up. That is my background, as I think most of you know. And we, I have made efforts to, to really focus on those pieces. So I know better than anybody what that feels like as a family, as a student, as that. So I wanted to thank Director Benno. We were going to continue to do that. That will be a focus of mine and our team to continue to hear the voices of those families whose language is not English as their first language at home. I think I wanted to share that. So thank you, Director Benno. And to Director Hamada, I wanted to thank you. I noted that you were out at Kent Lake for the freshman orientation. And, and I appreciated your comments about, hey, that was well-run. It is really about our, all of our staff, our teachers, custodians, principals, that are out there doing this work. And Vice President Bettinger, I appreciated what you said about, there are a lot of people working in the back. And I'll be the first to tell you, are we dotting every I, crossing every T? No, we are not. I don't believe many districts are at this point. Are we making efforts? Absolutely, to your point, Vice President Bettinger. And we'll continue to get better at that. I do know that in our efforts to communicate, we're going to continue to do that. I think our efforts really are around making sure we return back safely and we're still working toward that. And I forgot, Director Hamada, you mentioned phones. I want to make sure I talked about that. Yeah, it's been quite the past 18 months in terms of us being on Teams, really not communicating in person. And there's nothing like that. You know, I don't know about you, but Teams and Zoom and all of that, that's, it's not interactive. And I remember Director Benno mentioned that's, I'm ready to come back. This tonight is our first effort in being able to do that. Is it perfect? No, but we're going to get there. And I think, so I'll stop there and just say thank you to all three of you for sharing what you shared and we'll continue to work at this as a team.
So I think a couple of things. So it's interesting because we hear from both sides. So there are people who are full-on, just go back to school and just deal with it the way that it is. And then there are people who don't want to. And it's really interesting because everyone doesn't always know that. I think a lot of times we believe and the people around us feel the same way. And even in this room, we just kind of had that. And so that's, it's a challenge. And I'm a parent as well, I have a daughter who's starting as a senior. I have all of the same concerns. And I also work in another district and I've worked in a couple of districts where we have been having these conversations also. And it's really, really difficult to be able to meet the needs of, of everyone because everyone has different needs. And although, you know, we don't always hear it, that's the reality. And so a lot of times, it is hard to make those decisions. And we have staff that have different, there are staff who want to come back, there are staff who, I mean, it's just really an interesting dynamic. And so I think just trying, and I know most districts are really trying to do what's best based on the guidance that we have from the governor. And yeah, it's easy to say push back, but the reality is if he's got it mandated, there are legal implications, it's really difficult to do that. And so I don't know, I have, my husband owns a business. And so the fact that if someone comes in and shuts his business down or something because they're not following the mask mandate, people can't deal with that. So although there are people who may be privileged to be able to make those decisions, there are people who are not. So I think it's just a difficult situation. And I agree, there, there is information that I feel could have been communicated better. I, I don't disagree. I also know that we've been hitting a moving target for the last 18 months at least. And that's hard too. So I mean, I do understand the frustrations. Again, like I said, I'm a parent, I totally get it. My daughter did not want to go back to school. She did well remote learning last year and she didn't want to go back. But yet we find ourselves going back. And so I just, I hear and I do think that we could probably have a little bit more information, have a little bit more discussion and, and provide more. And I think, you know, I know that I have to believe districts are doing the best they can. I know how hard staff work. Staffs work 12, 16-hour days over and over and over again, trying to make accommodations and get things ready and do things and put plans into place. And yes, the buildings are closed in the summer typically. That's why they don't answer the phone. Typically, they're closed. I want to say like right at the beginning of July through. So that's why they, and that's just something that's always happened to us or something different that I don't know. But buildings are typically closed, so that's why they don't answer the phones. But, but again, I just, you know, I really, I agree, we, we need to do better, reaching out to our families. We do need to do better, getting more voices. But the challenge is all those voices are different. And so then it becomes figuring out which ones do we listen to, right? And so a lot of times people, they feel as though they're not being heard if their voices are being listened to or their decisions aren't being followed through. So it's just a really difficult space that we find ourselves in. But again, trying to be accommodating and hearing people and making sure they hearing people and making sure they know their voices are heard is very, very important. So I agree with that. I just know that we're moving forward in this and I think that, you know, we can just try our best to come together and move forward in the best way possible for our students and our staff. They are a number one priority, our students and our staff and families. But we're serving our kids. And I think we need to make sure that we are serving our kids. So at any capacity that we're not, I think that definitely needs to be addressed because that is what we're in the business for. So kind of what I have to say about that. But I do look forward to hearing more and learning more as we move forward. I think again, we're all learning and, and there's no telling what mandates may come next week or next month. I mean, it's just a really difficult, we have to pivot all the time. It's just a constant pivot. Anyway, so I, I really appreciate all of the work and I understand I'm intimately involved and I have an intimate perspective of all of the work that district administration and staff put into making these things happen. And it's not easy. And, and they spend time away from their families. So we talk about our families and that's true. I'm not home with my daughter either tonight. But they spend time away from their families constantly to try and make this work. So we all have skin in this game. We all have families. We all have, most of us have students who are in this exact same position. So, you know, just honoring and giving grace to those folks and recognizing that, you know, we are all making these sacrifices together. As a board, we're making these sacrifices. But that's what we signed up to do. And so we'll continue to do it. But just allowing grace and giving people the benefit of the doubt that they are doing the best that they can, trying to, trying to make this work for everyone and for all of our students. So I just appreciate that. I appreciate all that you all do. I, I don't know if it gets said enough, but, but I know it takes a lot. And so it's really appreciated. I appreciate the parents making their sacrifices. We've all had to make sacrifices. And so I think again, being kind to each other, giving each other grace, I think is huge. So, thank you.
I guess my last follow-up, I have like the specific questions that necessarily haven't been answered, like contact tracing and what we just heard from KEA. Like I think those are really important to get answers to that they aren't necessarily on the website. I know there's a lot of different information about like lunchtime specifically at high school. So like those are, those specific questions I think need to be answered that aren't on the website. So what are those questions? And then how can we get that information to families? So that would be my final thing I would have to say.
Yeah, if anyone could, that's on my list too. If anyone could tell us tonight what we're doing about, you know, contact tracing, are we, are we doing cohorts? If a student has to quarantine, what's the plan? You know, I see things about athletics, but not other activities like clubs and things. So what's that about? And, you know, is, is, how are we handling students with IEPs and 504s to discuss those remote options and accommodations? And honestly, you know, all the information, you know, that could be provided would, tonight would be helpful. If anyone has an answer for those questions.
I'm going to start with Director Benno. Can you repeat yours and then?
Mine specifically had to do with contact tracing.
Thank you.
And what plans are going to be in place for that. I know what I'm doing in my classroom just because I'm putting myself in written. But like also lunchtime was a huge concern specifically at secondary. When people have their masks off and they're going to be eating, when it's the highest risk of spreading COVID.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll call on Executive Director Melissa Laramie to talk a little bit about the communication that was around that and any deeper specifics. And then I'll ask Executive Director Heath, who has been working with our building principals on specifics around that. And so give you between them both, they can help support.
Yep, for contact tracing, we've been working with our principal leaders and specifically through our, at least our executive directors of learning improvement. And we've provided, in collaboration, we've been working on a document to answer all those questions that are building specific and plans as they've been implementing those. And then they work through them with levels to make the plans for everything from, much like last year, students and where they sit and knowing where each student sits for in the classroom for when there's contact tracing that needs to be done in case of a positive case. And when families will be contacted and those resources are on our internal website for letters and things that need to go out from the building level. As far as for lunch, it's the same, same thing. Every school is not the same. At even at the same, even at the levels. And so some are staggering and extending lunch periods, starting earlier, starting later. And some are adding spaces, but it's not a cookie cutter, like this is what you have to do. And this is your only option for every school. So I think we don't have like 43 different lunchtime plans posted on the website, but each building leader is working with their, the principals are working with their supervisor to make sure that their plans are in alignment with the guidance.
Well, my question would be, why wouldn't it? If the schools are updating their individual websites, wouldn't that be on there, including those documents? Like, why wouldn't those be on there for families to see?
Yeah, we haven't requested that from principals, but we, that is something I can talk to the Elise about and where we would place that on the school-specific websites. But it's not like a templated plan that they have to each fill out for every piece. That's not something that we did for the school year.
But there are plans, but parents and families can't necessarily see what those are because they're internal, they're on the internet instead. Is that what I'm hearing?
They're not on the internet. They're at the school level plan. And so schools, so we do district-wide communications from the communications office and then schools also have their opportunity to communicate with families separately. And so those are two different ways that things can go out.
But so in theory, like I'm not going to put blame on anybody, but in theory, some schools would be better at sending out information than others is what I'm hearing. Is that correct? In theory.
In theory, yes, they have different practices at each building leader. So as far as contact tracing, Randy, do you want to talk a little bit about that? And Dr. Behringer, me also need to, sure.
So yes, I work closely with our Assistant Director of Health Services. And the thing about the contact tracing and the other thing is a lot of this direction that we get around who needs to quarantine and, you know, who has been determined to be in close contact actually comes through public health. And so whenever there is a pub, a, a positive case, there is a communication that happens with public health and the determination of, you know, the work that the schools have done to try to determine who has been in close contact. Have they been within a certain number of feet? Have they, you know, for how long of a period of time? That information is shared with public health and public health makes some determinations. And at times, public health will make recommendations to close down classrooms possibly or schools. And so it, it's really a case by case, understanding the situation and taking direction from public health.
If there's not a backup plan of public health says we're closing Cameridian, there's not a backup plan for the students or teachers or educators there?
I think for that, so specifically you're asking, so if there was a closure, what is the plan?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have Dr. Behringer to talk to you a little bit about what we are doing as a district in that respect. Dr. Behringer.
So a big part of what we're doing is working through the bargaining process as well. So there's a lot of things that we can't just do without working through with our labor partners because there's an impact on our employees in our building when we're, we're working with those pieces. So as far as, can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Question is like, if public health were to say they're to close a specific school tomorrow, would there be a plan in place? Like without bargaining, like I know that's part of what we have to do, but if there wasn't bargaining, what would happen? What would be the plan?
So if they shut down Cameridian tomorrow, the plan would be that the kids would be home and the teachers would be home if they shut down the whole entire school, if everyone needed to quarantine. I don't, I don't believe that there is a plan specifically of if teachers are going to teach remote on the first day of school. That's not something that we have completed in bargaining process.
But public health doesn't necessarily control bargaining. So public health recommends it, that we would have to wait till bargaining would happen before we would decide what would happen with staff and students?
I, I can't, is it in HR, I can't answer that question. As far as if we shut down tomorrow, into what department of health and what the plan is.
Thank you.
I will add, Director Benno, that I have been attending the superintendent meetings where we have close communication with the governor and superintendent Reichtal. And these are questions we are asking because you're absolutely right. So if we just close a school down, let's take inclement weather. We close it down. And so there are impacts to, a number of impacts there. But if it's due to this specific pandemic, what is it that direction is, is, are we getting a superintendence for our boards to be able to make that determination and help us at that bargaining table? And so we are in close conversations with our ESD superintendent, John Welch. These are questions that are constantly coming up on weekly meetings.
Thank you.
Actually, Director Vingadaslam had a couple of questions too. Are you, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you. So I was listening towards the end and I appreciated all the questions. I also wanted some clarity on some of those. I just wanted to say at the tail end, just now, interim superintendent Melo mentioned ESDs. And I do think we are all in the same page, you know, in terms of not knowing what can happen. And we're getting guidance from ESDs and OSPI and several board directors from different school districts are meeting on various issues surrounding this. And, and no one seems to really have an answer yet. And everybody's waiting on guidance from OSPI. That said, I do feel with bargaining, that makes it very, very difficult to get some resolution. But I do appreciate that families have written and that we've had some opportunities to respond to some of their specific questions. So I do thank interim superintendent Melo for responding in a timely manner to many of the questions that were posed. I, I understand board frustration there as well. But I, I guess, I know it's not consolation, but I feel like a lot of our school districts are on the same boat and it's a little unsettling. It is for me as a board director. And I, I feel the pain of our families and I, I think our district is doing as much as we can to get the responses and plans together. So I just wanted to comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have still have my question. So I just guess I want clarity on contact tracing. Are we, do we have a district-wide plan for contact tracing? Like, like all kids have to sit in the same spot every time? All kids have to sit in the same spot for lunch? Do we have a district-wide plan or is that each school administrator is, is developing that?
I can answer that a couple of ways and I'll let Executive Director Melissa Laramie. One is differentiating between, do we have a district plan? Absolutely. We have a process in place that we started last year in terms of following anytime we have a, an outbreak. Because we had them last year and we've been following through, following public health guidance. And also doing that contact, contact tracing. We've had them in athletics. We had them in our buildings where we haven't had students. So, so we do have the district-wide. Melissa can talk a little bit more about other alignment in terms of contact tracing that's happened for students.
Thank you, Mr. Melo. So we, at elementary level and secondary levels, Director Benno mentioned, like it's very different and, and the ability to assign seating at lunches is different. But we've been working with our building leaders on everything from even doing assigned seating for open houses that are being held in person so that there's contact tracing at those types of events for families that come in. So it's absolutely part of the work that we've been doing with the executive directors of learning improvement who supervise the principals to make sure that to the extent possible, we're meeting all the physical distancing requirements, but then also able to track and contract trace as we did last year in hybrid, where students are, where staff are and who they're around throughout the day. And so those, that looks different from school level to school level and from building to building and somewhat in the sense of how they do assigned seating and seating charts to dots on the lunch table to how sign-in sheets are done and how that works. So attendance and all of that plays into that, but there, so in that sense, yes, there's a plan, but again, it's not the same for every building, for every classroom.
Thank you. And, um,
just about 504s and IEPs?
Yes.
So those are annual processes that go through both student family services and teaching and learning. And so those are not, those are also done on an annual basis each year and requires different approvals. They're just two separate things. So I don't know, Randy, if you want to talk about 504s, still if you want to talk about IEPs.
I think the thing to remember about IEPs and 504s is yes, there is a requirement for an annual review. However, a parent can request that review at any time also, and the team can come back together. Decisions about students with a 504 plan or an IEP really is up to the team to make together collectively. And so that is the process. And I know that there's some teams that have been coming together to discuss, you know, the accommodations that might be needed in, in some of these situations.
Thank you.
Interim Chief Heath, he pretty much captured what that process is. If there is a student who may not be in school for four weeks or more, then they might, I'm sorry, this mask is a little hard talking. They may want to take on a different route, which requires a formal evaluation and an update to that IEP for the student to receive hospital homebound services because they would not be able to attend school. We are planning to implement our IEPs fully with in-person instruction. And as parents may have different requests, they, we would engage in that IEP process, conduct a meeting and talk through what the options are and always keeping in mind what's the least restrictive environment for our students.
And so I guess my question is, because some of our students with IEPs are medically fragile. So does it depend, does, does the parent have to reach out? Like if I'm a parent with a medically fragile child, would I need to reach out to the school to get that? Get different accommodations for school this year?
The IEP team reviews this information annually. So if they are identifying students right now that may fall into that area, then they're going to engage in the process of actually conducting a meeting to kind of help further support communication around that process. Our team has been working on providing some additional communication that's going to help our building leaders and our teachers kind of understand all the options that are available that's aligned with our current process. It's just as a reminder of what process we would engage in. Because IEPs are legal documents, our processes are pretty set. So we do always want to adhere as closely as we can to the processes as they're outlined. If there are circumstances that come up that require a change in placement for a student or a change in the services that they receive, that's conducted through the IEP team meeting, which involves the family as well to kind of help make and finalize those decisions.
And Vice President Bettinger, if I may, I wanted just to add to, those are for existing IEPs and 504s. And so there is a referral process within each team under 504 as well as IEPs. So I just wanted to point that out.
Can I do a follow-up to that? Is that okay, Vice President Bettinger?
Yeah.
About like, so, so for families that have students who are medically fragile and they have concerns about coming in, they could technically reach out if, if someone does reach out to them, they can reach out to their IEP supervisor or team, or they can apply for homebound learning if they need to stay home because of their, they have high risk or whatnot. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, parents can always reach out and request a meeting. They, that can happen at any time. The teams are reviewing as students are preparing to come back to school in person to kind of point out where there might be some concerns or needs. And the IEP team will work with our district team to go through what the process is to see if we're able to, if we need to provide alternative supports for those students. We do not have a remote, as we, as we've discussed this evening, there is not an online option for our students. If the least restrictive environment If the least restrictive environment for students is outlined in the I E P says that they need to have some services that cannot be provided in person or the child is unable to attend, that hospital homebound placement does require an additional evaluation and an update to the I E P for that to be put into place.
Director Ben, I also wanted to add that if there was not an I E P in place or not a 504, many times we do get students that are new to the district. And so there are individual health plans. And I mentioned this a few meetings past, I think it's Director Hamada. We have our school nurses with their teams develop individual health plans. Now, they work closely with a healthcare provider potentially because there are medications that maybe need be taking. Anyway, just wanted to point out the teams in our schools are prepared to do that. And we do that because there are some times that things change as they go through, matriculate through the grade levels.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. I just, I just think about like being in a classroom and thinking about what happens with students. I sometimes just am concerned because sometimes there's an idea that, like from our position on this side, that, oh, teachers are going to do what they're going to do and students are just going to follow the rules and just be good and everything's great. And we know that's not realistic. We know kids play, we know kids, you know, horse around. We know that masks aren't always going to be on totally. So like, it's, it's just letting people know, like as we have, like students who are medically fragile, like it's not going to be a perfect environment. We have to recognize that and we have to do our best to make sure that we're going to do everything we can to support them and protect them the way best we can. So I just want to add that.
Yeah, and that I H P process is just a part of our process.
Thank you.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Interim Superintendent, I did have a question on what is happening in all of our schools? We, I heard that there are plans being implemented in each one of the buildings. And my wondering is, is there any sort of effort to kind of gather best practices? Or what is happening that is really helping that building? You know, whether it's hearing from our families or getting some information via thought exchange? I'm not quite sure. But what is the plan to understand how well things are going in the buildings?
No, thank you for that question, Director Vingadaslam. It relates, relates back to a document, Director Benno, that I think I provided. It's, it's that ongoing document that our building principals with their staffs are continuing to add to. That's part of it. And the next step for our executive directors for learning improvement is really sharing that best practice, as you mentioned. And that is, how are you conducting lunches? For example, we may have different spaces and how are you utilizing that? How are you, you know, setting up for traffic for recess? Or lunches at a high school, different, a, a high school that doesn't have a large commons area? And so Director Vingadaslam, that's the kind of, of communication that's happening. And our edlees meet weekly together and then with their principals to continue to share that best practice. So, and as President Daniels mentioned earlier, we don't have all the answers. And I think as we continue to work together and collaborate on this, we learn from each other and learn from other districts as well. And so I hope that captured the answers to your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, sorry, Director Benjer asked about athletics and activities and performing arts. And there are two separate sources for guidance from the state. One is specifically for sports activities. And then performing arts guidance comes under the General Department of Health Guidelines, all of which have been shared with staff and are part of the questions and answers that happen in those levels meetings that Mr. Vela was referring to. And Mr. Brian Smith, our Director of Athletics and Activities, has been working with school, school building staff on implementing those. But they are sourced in two different places from the state.
That be posted on the website?
They both are.
Okay, I didn't see, I only saw the athletics. So, thank you. I'll go look for that.
Hey, so it's like we are on to agenda item nine. Items for discussion and approval. So agenda item nine point zero one, interim superintendent contract for Israel Vela. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the interim superintendent contract for Israel Vela.
I second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the interim superintendent contract for Israel Vela, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. There is a second, is that right? With the same topic, we need a second motion.
Remember where I should.
I'm going to make the motion that we have our legal team look at doing an extension for contract for Mr. Israel Vela.
My second.
And it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
No, I just want to say that we're almost August 31st and we're going to need some more time. And as far as I'm concerned, interim superintendent Melo has done a great job so far with me.
So I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to begin, instruct our council to begin negotiations for an extension of the contract for super, for interim superintendent Israel Vela, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Nine point zero two, resolution number 1609, the extension of our 2020, 2021 debt service, debt service fund budget. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve nine point zero two, resolution number 1609, extension of 2021 debt service fund budget.
My second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think all the discussion we had before was clarified on that pretty well. And it's very understandable.
Yeah, thank you. It was very helpful.
Yep.
All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero two, resolution number 1609, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Is there any extension? Motion carries. Nine, nine point zero three, resolution number 1610, the adoption of our 2021, 22 budget. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt nine point zero three, resolution number 1610, adoption of 2021, 2022 budget.
My second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just again, thank you for all the information. That was very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
And I just think, you know, the more we can become informed and inform our public and talk about all the things that our public is asking us to do. It's just, I really appreciated that input and, and the concern for what the board was hearing from the public to put on the budget. So again, thank you to the entire staff that worked on it. Thank you.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero three, the resolution and adoption of 2021, 22 budget, resolution number 1610, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. We do have, oh, I'm sorry, nine point zero four, Kent School District Transportation Services purchase of Bluebird School buses. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve nine point oh four, Kent School District Transportation Services purchase of Bluebird School buses. There are seconds.
My second.
Hey, is there any discussion?
I just had a question and if no one's here to answer, I just, so we've approved a lot of buses and I think that's good, especially since these are from 1995. So I just, is there a, like, what's our regular rotation schedule for buses?
Thank you for the question. I, I have a director transportation, Mr. Justin Denison, that can help with that.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Directors of the Board. Thanks for having me. So our rotation is to use our available transportation vehicle fund that we have available every year. That amount changes depending on our depreciation schedule that goes into account specifically that can only be used on school buses. Working in conjunction with finance, we figured out how many buses we could purchase this year. And that's how we ended up on two. So we go through our fleet with the input of our shop supervisor, figure out any mechanical issues that are going on, mileage, and then our operational needs. And so this year we, we selected two wheelchair equipped special education school buses.
Thank you. Good to work.
Can I ask if they are enviro friendly? Are they electric? Are they, like, I'm just kind of curious.
These specific buses we're purchasing are diesel.
Yeah, that's not very much. Well, that's okay for now. In the future, I would love for us to kind of look at environmentally sound ways of operating.
Our previous purchase were three electric school buses with the assistance of a Department of Ecology grant.
That's why I was curious because I didn't see that listed on this.
Are those hitting the road this year?
We received those last year and they, they did, they were on routes in the spring when we were in the hybrid setting.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero four, the Kent School District Transportation Services purchase of Bluebird School buses, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Maya, did you vote?
Yeah.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Are there any extensions? Motion carries. We do have a comment card for our next agenda item, nine point zero five. And I will call on, no, forgive me, is it Dionika?
Yes.
Dionika.
Um, yeah, it's Dionika.
Dionika, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. My name is Dionika Sai. I'm a member of Kent Youth Collective 442. And I'm also a former student and graduate of K S D, having graduated from Pine Tree Elementary, Mill Creek Middle School and Kent Meridian High School. And I'm here to urge you to vote against the adoption of the School Resource Officer contract. On the last day of my freshman year at Kent Meridian, my classmates made the small mistake of bringing a Nerf gun to school, a toy. And in response to bringing this toy to school, they were met with 12 cop cars out in the front of our school and arrest. This is the kind of experience we are setting our students up for when we are bringing police into our schools. The School Resource Officer program suggests this contract with the police is meant to protect students. But as my experience and the experience of so many black and brown students in this district have shown, police in schools do not keep students safe. Cops in schools do not keep students out of the criminal justice system, which is what the contract suggests. But instead, the presence of, of cops in school brings the criminal justice into the school, into interacting with the students in the first place. Police in schools means policing our kids. That is the purpose. That is their job, is to police. And when we put them in schools, they are policing our students. That is their job. And so I urge you to vote against the S R O contract. I urge you to invest in students through counselors, through nurses, through tutoring, through transformative and restorative methods of discipline and restoration for our students. I urge you to invest in students, not police. Thank you.
Right. Agenda item nine point zero five, 2021, 22 Kent School District and City of Kent School Resource Officer, Kent Police Liaison Services contract. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve nine point oh five, two, 2021, 2022 Kent School District and City of Kent School Resource Officer and Kent Police Liaison Services contract.
Second.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Oh, yeah. So I was, I read the thought exchange about this topic and it's pretty split. We've got all kinds of comments that are pretty split. And then I went back and, you know, on our website, we posted that the K S D staff with the 21, 22 contract memorandum of agreement, it said, K S D staff will answer top questions about the S R O program and draft contracts over the summer and host additional informational and community meetings before the K S D board approves any future contracts with local law enforcement agencies for school resource officers in Kent School District. And then recently, after our meeting on the 19th, it was posted on the website that that was the public meeting. Well, that was a closed meeting with the South King County Discipline Coalition. And students didn't, I mean, it wasn't advertised as a discussion about S R Os. We have not had community discussion about it. And I know that I personally have asked for community discussion about this for a long, long time. And at this point, I, I will share, I am not personally comfortable voting on this item until we have that open, public discussion with everyone having the opportunity to specifically speak. And I'll get on my soapbox right now about having an option for people to also submit written comment via the internet like we were when we were remote, for the very reason that if someone wanted to speak and has COVID or has been recently, you know, exposed. So it just, I feel like we need to do what we say we're going to do and say what we're going to do and do it. The Covington, we don't have a contract yet for Covington or King County Sheriff's, as I understand it. And so those are, those are my comments. I, I don't feel like this, we did, we gave the opportunity for public comment and a real discussion about it, that people knew that that was the discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to speak against as well. But one of my first problems with this, what do we call it? Service contract, this policy, is there something in place that says if the contract is not approved at the August 25th, 2021 board meeting, school resource officers will not be in place August 21st, 20, August 26th, 2021, for the, for, for the first day of school. I feel to me that statement was a little fear baiting. I didn't like that or appreciate that because we don't have a contract with Covington Police. We don't have a contract with King County. So they weren't going to be in place in those other schools as well. So for me, I didn't like that statement, first of all. I also did, feel like I didn't get a lot of information on this. So I did my own research and reached out to groups. Like I reached out to 442, the youth led coalition to talk to them. I reached out to education associations, particularly people from the W A to ask about positionality when it came to their beliefs about school resource officers in schools. And again, the, the youth, the youth I talked to were very against it and they had a lot of reasoning for it. And I agree with Vice President Benjer, but we need more community input and guidance. But I don't want us to lead it. I want the youth to lead it. And I want the youth to be able to invite who they want to come be a part of it, including us board members, so that we can witness and see. Because I think that if the youth lead it, we're going to hear more of what they want and what they believe. And they're not going to, when adults tend to lead things, youth don't tend to speak up. And so like a lot of events I do with my nonprofit I volunteer with is we always have youth spaces and adult spaces because there are sometimes when adults are present, the youth will not speak. So we need to have youth voice be center when it comes to this. And I agree, I don't feel like we got it. Thought exchange was fine. I don't think it was great. I think we need more opportunities for students to voice concerns because there's a lot of different things on there. I think that the idea of the S R O being in school as like a pseudo counselor is problematic. I think that we need mental health professionals. People have been trained in mental health profession, with mental health profession to support students with things like if someone experiences sexual assault, they probably shouldn't go to a police officer first. They probably need to go to a hospital counselor, mental health specialist. So I just, I have a part of, part of my problem is having S R Os being one of the safety circles in the plan that I saw. And I just don't feel right about that. That doesn't sit well with me. I don't feel like that's a student centered approach. I think if we really are going to promote social emotional learning, we need to make sure that students have access to wraparound services, mental health support, train educators, counselors in schools. As I mentioned earlier, counselors have a lot going on. They're doing a lot of guidance. So, and they want to do more, but they have too much. So we need more counselors. I feel like the, the funds that are put here could be used in other places. I see that later on, we're going to vote on some other mental health supports. That's great. I just, in my mind, cannot see as someone who is in the building as a liaison or as a figurehead being a job. Like if we want S R Os to be connecting with students, there's other ways, volunteer practices, coming to games, that I think would be well suited. I feel like every minute of my time as a teacher is calculated. If not, I get talked to. But I'm just, I'm, I guess I don't see what that position looks like in a building. Like I guess I don't see it. I don't understand it. So I don't feel comfortable voting for this.
And to be clear, I just, I'm sorry. I, I'll let you speak and then I have. I got you. I, I'll let you speak and then I have, I got you.
Oh, sorry, thank you. What I wanted to say is that I had some difficulty thinking about this particular position. And I feel like one of the things that kind of made me think through this clearly were the presentations that were put out the last several months and particularly the explanations that were provided at the South King County Coalition Discipline Coalition meeting. It was a close meeting, but there were a lot of families who were invited to attend that meeting. And I just want to say that in previous year, when we took our students to Olympia, they had the opportunity to speak with legislators and they pointedly asked, you know, do you want cops in schools? And the students were very focused on the, the job that, or the interactions that they've had and very complimentary of our safety officers. I realize these are school resource officers, but one of the things that really changed my thoughts on it is the RCW that came out twenty-eight, eight, three, twenty-one, twenty-four, where the legislature created the statewide SRO program or SRO statement, program requirements. And clearly, we are making sure that the officers' duties and responsibilities related to the student behavior include, you know, what it states is that it's prohibition of a school resource officer from becoming involved in formal school discipline situations that are the responsibility of school administrators. So when I read that statement and then preceding that or following that, the school district policy and procedures that clarify the circumstances under which teachers and school administrators may ask an officer to intervene with the student, it's very clear to me that they are going to be called at the last resort on emergent situations. And so that part of it was not very clear to the families who were part of that discipline coalition. And one of the requests was to make that very clear to the public because they were not very clear on that whole section of the RCW. So knowing that, I feel like, you know, we are going to make every effort to not call on the SROs unless there is a severe emergency of some sort.
Um, I'd like to kind of weigh in on this because this has been something that I've been studying for a long time and been on some committees in Kent, actually, when I was starting a nonprofit for kids. And we brought into that nonprofit a police officer, and actually Kent Police Officer, but nobody ever knew he was there. He worked out with the kids, he traveled with the kids, and he developed a community policing policy with the kids where there was an incident up on East Hill and a lot of the kids were going to have some things going on. And these kids did not realize that he was a police officer. And when they rolled up on the scene to, in a fight that was about ready to go on, which could have created a lot of problems, he jumped out of the car and they, all the kids knew him. And so what he was able to do, and they did not know he was a police officer, he was able to get those kids to all sit down on different sides. And the situation was dismissed because they worked together and because the trust relationship and the community involvement relationship and the community policing that he had laid that foundation for. And I can kind, I mean, I realize that's a nonprofit, which actually was housed in a Kent school building, is not the same as an officer being in the schools during the day. But what they're in placing on the legislature with the new parameters, training, 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 and de-escalating, all these other things, they're demanding hours of training for them, not going to say that it's always going to happen, they'd be perfect. And sure, I'm, I'll bet in the past, there's been some incidents that have been horrendous and upsetting to me. And when I hear about in a South King County coalition where a young six-year-old, and I think this happened quite a while ago, but whenever it happened, was placed in the back of a police car in handcuffs, that's ridiculous, okay? And that's not what SRO is about. And that's not what they should be doing. And thank goodness, I think we're trending to understand that our police have to start pivoting toward being community policing. And SROs are going to be, have laws that they're going to have to face and training they're going to have to face. But in addition to that, I, I was on a statewide Zoom meeting for resource officers all over the state of Washington from different districts. And every one of them talked about what they were involved in, and none of it was really policing. They were running programs for, one of them had a band that they were working with, one of them had golf clubs, a golf organization, they started with the kids in another area, all these different things that build community environment. With anything like this, it has to be not only laws and training in place, it's how we act upon it every day. And it's up to the board, it's up to the district, it's up to our staff to be in these buildings and find out what's happening on the ground floor. And the only thing I have a problem with this tonight is, we were told, and I, and I don't want to say I said this, but I did, we have to have a community meeting and the kids have to lead it before we present this for a vote. And that's the problem I have tonight, because we haven't done that.
Yeah, we, we said we would. And, and I want to hear from school staff. I want to, we, we're going to have meetings. We've been requesting meetings. And it was on the website that we were going to have meetings. I'm not unwilling to look at this at a later meeting after we have community discussion. But I want to hear from all our stakeholders, teachers, principals, admin, students especially. Because I'm, I don't go to school right now. I haven't gone to school for many years. I don't know what it's like, you know, so.
Well, I'll just say that I, so prior to COVID, I volunteered every week at my kid's high school for the last several years. And I'm going to say something opposite because the interactions that I saw with SROs, for the most part, were kids asking to talk to them when they could not talk to other people. And I saw SROs walking the students and taking them outside. I saw SROs coming to visit a student in the hospital that got shot, that I knew personally, came to visit, brought his wife to visit the student in the hospital and that. So I saw SROs, when we went, when we first went into COVID, I went up to Covington Elementary School for one of the first times we were providing lunches. And the students, kids were running up to the SROs and they couldn't hug them because they were supposed to stay a distance away. So I guess my experience and, in particular, talking about kids of color, my kids are kids of color and I, I supported many kids of color. That was a lot of the kids that I mentored, have had very positive interactions with SROs. And so I'm not saying that's a blanket statement. I know there are individual issues that happen, just like with teachers, principals, everybody else. That's just life. And so, but I feel as though, in my experience and the kids and students that I know and I've had the experience of working with and talking to over the last, at least five years, prior to COVID in the high school, they are a valued member of, of that team. And I do think, and I mentioned before, the way that they're presented at times is difficult because most times families don't know that they exist until there's a problem. And I think that that is part of the challenge, but I do believe that they are a valuable part of the team. At least in the buildings that I've been in and the buildings that I've worked in districts also as well. SROs in one of my districts, he would take eight hundred, or I'm sorry, he would take about two hundred kids to an eight hundred kid event, which is the Black and Brown Summit, the SRO planned to take all of those kids. He was the one that arranged it. He was the one. So I, I just believe in my experience with SROs. They've been a positive influence for the most part. Again, every interaction might not be, but I think that it would be detrimental to take those, those positions away.
I just think as, I've been, I've been teaching health and psychology for the last twenty years. And what I find is that we don't prioritize mental health enough. Many of my students don't want to talk about mental health. They don't have, they don't have access to services and sure, a lot of insurance, state plans don't cover mental health services. And I just feel like that in a school environment, why not prioritize if we're really going to talk about social emotional learning? Like, why not bring in trained, professional mental health services? And that's just my thing. And it's, it's not anything against police officers, and I know people are going to say that, but I, I don't care about that. What I care about is making sure that, like, we're going to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this program, which might help some kids, which, fine, but like, how many kids will be helped more if we put funding into mental health services and wraparound services to help students from, from elementary school all the way up? And I just, I think that the data shows that. And I think that the SRO program maybe puts Band-Aids and supports a few kids. I just think that funds and support need to be put for mental health services. That's just, in, in my experience, maybe not professional, but as someone who's taught psychology and health for all these years, it's just like, what, we just need to, we need to prioritize that because students aren't getting enough. And that's where my brain is. I just really want to support students.
Yeah, I, when I respond to, will not respond to Director Benner. I, I appreciate what Director Benner said. And I agree that we do need to invest in mental health counselors. I, I guess I just want to be clear in my understanding that this SRO program, we're talking about an individual for, with the city of Kent. We have a lot of safety officers who do fantastic work day in and day out. And I see this individual as being someone who is going to be there in very difficult positions when a teacher or educator can't intervene. It requires difficult issue, difficult situations that are not discipline-related. And I do feel like our budget priorities clearly indicate that we are going to make investments in mental health counseling. And we see FTEs there that we probably will not have in, 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 or we have never had in the past that's significant. So in that sense, I feel like, you know, we're not talking about an entire program with all of our safety officers, but we're talking about a SRO in the school, in Kent schools.
Right, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero five, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Kent School District and City of Kent School Resource Officer and Kent Police Liaison Services contract. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no.
No.
Any extensions? Motion passes. Onto agenda item nine point zero six, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Kent School District and Kent Youth and Family Services Professional Services Contract. Is there a motion?
I move that we support nine point zero six Kent School District and Kent Youth and Family Services Professional Services contract.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero six, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Kent School District and Kent Youth and Family Services Professional Service Contract. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Are there any extensions? Motion carries. Onto nine point oh seven, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Kent School District and Valley Cities Counseling and Consultation Professional Services Contract. Is there a motion?
And make a motion, we approve nine point zero seven, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Kent School District and Valley Cities Counseling and Consulting Professional Services Contract.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero seven, the Kent School District and Valley Cities Counseling and Consulting Professional Services Contract. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Nine point zero eight, the Mattson Middle School Retention Pond Cleaning Contract to River's Edge.
I move that we approve nine point zero eight, Mattson Middle School Retention Pond Cleaning Contract for River's Edge.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
It's a lot to clean a pond. That's it.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero eight, Mattson Middle School Retention Pond Cleansing, Cleaning Contract to River's Edge. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Nine point zero nine, the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six Kent School District and ATS Automation Direct Digital Control Support Agreement. Is there a motion?
I move, I move that we approve nine point zero nine, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-six and School District ATS Automation Direct Digital Control Support Agreement.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor of approving agenda item nine point zero nine, the twenty twenty-one to twenty-six Kent School District and ATS Automation Direct Digital Control Support Agreement. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. We are on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that a board director would like to pull from the consent agenda? Is there a motion then to approve consent agenda items number one, ten point zero one through ten point zero eight?
I move that we approve consent agenda items ten point zero one through ten point zero eight.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor of approving our consent agenda items ten point zero one through ten point zero eight. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Below our agenda item eleven, informational agreements. We are on to our agenda item number twelve, communication. And we do have one final comment from the audience. And this is from Victoria. Is it Boiko? Thank you.
To be honest, I thought I'll be here till twelve o'clock. I have kids at home. Um, yeah, my name is Victoria Boy. I'm going to take this off because I can't take it. I have a.
I do apologize. You have to keep it on.
Well, we're doing six feet apart, so.
I apologize.
Just easier to speak that way.
I understand, but we, we mentioned earlier, you must keep your mask on when you do public comments.
Um, my kids, the, when we were talking about getting in touch with the school during the summertime, I want to mention that I had a really hard time getting in touch with the school. I had so many questions, so many concerns that I wanted to answer. I came to the school a couple of times. It was closed. Come back in August. The teachers will be back in session August sixteenth, I believe. Thursday said August second. When I came, it's August second. They told me the principal is not here. No one's here to answer your questions. Come back later. I called, when I come, they said, oh, sorry, give a call next time you come. It just is very unorganized. It's very unprofessional. I know our tax dollars are going somewhere and it was not going to what we were hoping for. I pulled out my kids from Meadow Ridge two years ago. They went to homeschool because I wanted to see some sort of challenge in them. I want them to grow in, in school and I wasn't seeing that in the Meadow Ridge. I mean, compared to all the other schools that my relatives go to in the Kent District, they are having horrible experiences in all the schools. Well, I couldn't compare that to Meadow Ridge because I had a good experience. Besides that, the kids were not excelling. Everybody is saying that there were shootings. There were, uh, uh, school shutdowns and closed due to some sort of a situation, fights. The things are going on. I sort of freaked out, so I pulled my kids out and I was like, okay, you know, anything had happened. For the past two years, they were in homeschool. They were doing really well. They excelled. It was harder for them to learn their life, trying to adapt to new atmosphere. But they did so well. They were learning. They were telling me things that, they're like, oh, wow, we didn't know this, you know? How come you, Meadow Ridge didn't teach us this? And I was like, I don't know, you know, that's not. That's not me to answer for you guys. That's Meadow Ridge to answer to. But I was hoping for, and I spoke to teachers, like, my child is falling behind, and he's not doing much. He's not learning, like, the reading, the basic skills of reading. He was behind. He was learning Ukrainian and Russian. English was his practically third language. And I was telling the teachers, like, he's learning two different languages at the same time. And I was hoping for some sort of extra support or some sort of feedback. But when I come to the student council conferences, they tell me, oh, I'm sorry, but you need to work with your child at home. He's falling behind. Well, how come I didn't know this beforehand, before I had to come to the student conferences? But, I mean, there were many ways to communicate. There were many ways to let me know that we had phone apps that came out, but we didn't get notified until the conferences. And it was sort of upsetting, but we made it work, and I, you know, I tried to work with the teachers. And another thing is, I want to mention, I know the time is running out. Whenever I want to speak about sex education with the teachers, nobody had an answer for me either. I was like, I was hoping to get some sort of a, like, I want to opt my kids out of it. They don't need it. It's unnecessary. They're little. I have seven kids ranging from going to seventh grade and kindergarten. I have five students going to the school system, and I do worry. It's my job to teach them, and I want to keep it that way, and I want it to come from me and my husband. We do have our talks. We do talk. We do discuss all the things that we need to talk. We know what age appropriate for them. We did have a sex talk for the older ones. The younger ones, I believe, are still little. But the school's saying that, oh, it's needed, it's mandatory. I was told we can opt out, but again, will the teachers be forcing something about, oh, it's the law? You know, will there be a guarantee that if I opt my kids out, they will be opted out? Or they're going to be like, oh, no, no, this is the law?
Could you finish your thought?
Oh, that's all.
Could you please finish your, finish your comment, please?
Okay, so I just want to, I will have a guarantee that kids will be opted out if I do opt them out. And another thing about PE was my, my main concern was for PE. I was told the kids will be forced to wear masks during PE, which is one of my biggest concerns. Is it's unhealthy and unnecessary for them to wear masks during PE, because that's a health issue and a health hazard. I'm sure the doctors and a lot of physicians can tell me you. And from my, my experience hearing people having poisoning from the mask, from breathing their own oxygen.
I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
I just want to know, I was, one thing, I'm here because of the mask. If I can opt out of the mask during PE is my question.
You can connect with someone after the meeting, possibly, and have that, okay? Thank you. All right, at this time, we are going to begin our board reports and discussions. We'll begin with Director Benner.
Yes, thank you. I thought we were going to be here till midnight as well. So kudos, as always, Mr. Rarick and your budget report. I always enjoy listening to them, so thank you. And I look forward to your reports in the future. Over the summer, in the past, I met with lots of different people. I talked with community members via Zoom about virtual options and some concerns people had about opening of school. I attended Talk 2021, which was amazing. I even jumped in and presented something when a presenter didn't show up, which was fun and fine. I had a great time. We attended the Covington City Council meeting, which was great. I finally finished my board boot camp from WASDA, which is virtual, which is great. I've learned a lot from that. I met with students from the group 442 to talk about SROs. Great group of students, great advocates. I was very excited to hear from them. Coming up, I am visiting schools on Friday. We're going to Mill Creek and Kent Meridian and East Hill Elementary. So I'm excited to go check out and see what's going on as the second day of school. I'm attending the ribbon cutting at the Kent Laboratory Academy on Saturday. I'm excited to be there and say a few words. I'm, I'm really excited to see the new building. And also, like, I'm in Renton. I'm starting school and going into the classroom, so I have my own concerns about teaching 34 ninth graders in my health class in a small room with crappy ventilation and an old school. So I have my own things, like, and I'm really kind of listening from families and educators because I'm going to be doing that same thing, and I have similar questions. Some notes before I finish is just, I'm, I'm a big believer in discourse. So I, I will always continue to urge the public to be engaged with elected officials and to make your voices heard. We're here because the public has entrusted us to make sure we do what's best for students. We're not always going to agree on things, so I always ask some people, contact me if you have questions or concerns. I really do my best to answer all emails that come to me. I'm not going to say answer everyone. It's hard. But I'm also going to ask, because people try to reach out on my social media, like, please respond to my Kent School District email for business-related things. I want to capture everything, like Facebook groups and Instagram doesn't capture, like, business. So if people have business, please reach out to my school district email. I'm glad we're in person. I'm very glad to see people, you know, besides my partner. I love him, but, you know, I like to see other people. So it's great to see everybody. I do, again, have concerns about virtual options for people to participate in these board meetings. I did not like that the virtual forum for comments disappeared. And I think that, I know that we're working on that, but people need to be able to, they can watch on YouTube, which is great. But they, I want people to still be able to submit public comments like we had before. I'm also disappointed about the SRO vote. That's fine, but I hope that we continue to listen to our students, advocate for them, let them lead, let them learn to be leaders, and these community meetings that we're going to have at the high schools that we let students leave these community meetings and be able to voice their concerns that they have. And that's all for my report this evening.
Vice President, I'll be brief. I am very happy to be back in person, too. I want to thank everyone who joined us in person today and all who have joined remotely. I want to thank, an extra thank you again to our maintenance facilities and custodial staff. I want to thank all our staff, all our central office staff, all our teachers, all our administrators, everyone who's in the schools, everyone who's been working. I want to thank them. It's been an odd time. And moving forward, I'm going to be requesting, you know, I think it takes the full board. We have policy 1400 about public comment and kind of echoing that. I, I will put my voice in there, too, with, we're kind of in this strange, odd world. I would advocate again for public comment also being able to be submitted remotely because I think it's important to make sure we're, we're not setting up barriers for anyone to participate. And, you know, when we go through something like COVID and where I feel like we're not even halfway through, but when we go make changes, there are some things that are worthwhile keeping. And I really appreciate that, you know, I have a board colleague who can attend remotely. And Dr. Harmon was able to attend remotely. I fully support that because as we move through things, there might be times where we have to do that. So, you know, I'm putting my, my name in the ring, too, saying I'm, I'd like us to have a real solid discussion about that as a board, so we can, you know, formally decide if that's something we, a practice we want to continue. I'm going to be visiting Kent Ridge and Meeker tomorrow morning with interim superintendent Vela. I'm very excited to see all our students. And I wish everyone, our students and our school staff, a great first day of school. And that concludes.
Well, first of all, echo, it's good to be back in person, board meeting. That's one of my strong positions, is I like to work with people one-on-one and get a feel for the community. Throughout the summer, I was out and about monitoring the school lunch distribution in person. And I want to give a big shout out to our staff. They were out there doing a great job. And it's pretty amazing throughout the summer how many kids we fed in this area. And that's something that schools are really, really have never been in the business. I mean, they do have school lunches, but taking on feeding all these kids through a pandemic has been quite an undertaking. On July 20th, we had a joint meeting with the city of Covington, and several topics came up. The city council and the city manager had questions on how bullying, mental health, and behavior issues would be handled. We went through that and talked about that, and they learned about that. And there was a discussion with the Covington Council about SROs, too, and school path, walking paths. And I want to give a shout out to our former Kent Meridian High School grad who was appointed as a new police chief of Covington. And I thought that was pretty cool. And also, I want to bring up a point for any of our kids that are watching online, young people. Students living in Covington or a mile from the city of Covington have an opportunity to do, to apply for commission positions. They have youth people on their city commissions. You can contact Julie Johnson at the city of Covington, and there is presently an open position for youth on the Human Service Commission at present. It teaches them how to be involved civically, and they get to oversee a huge budget that goes out to the community for help in human services. And it's quite, quite an experience for a young person to serve on a commission in a city. So that's an opportunity. On July 23rd, I had a great conversation with, one-on-one with a parent on dyslexia issues. She has really studied this, and, and she really educated me on a lot of other things. And I am dedicated to learning more and more about dyslexia and trying to get more and more of that knowledge into our school system. On August 6th, I requested a meeting with our interim superintendent Villa, and it was a good reconnecting session. One of the main questions I was interested in, are we ready to pivot if we have, have the pandemic come back in full force? And he assured me that we were. August 16th, 17th, and 18th, I attended the entire sessions for Talk 2021. And a huge shout out to our staff and leadership planning team that presented. And some of those that, you know, there are several people on that committee, but Chief West, Christine Corbly, Christopher White, Tashawn Christie, Melissa Laramie, and Kathy Lindowski seemed to have a huge part in the leadership in that, and it was excellent. The guest speakers were excellent, and some of the highlights, I'm not going to go over. It was a three-day session from eight till four. So it's like going to college classes for three days, half a day. We had great speakers, but some of the things I picked up from that is a sense of belonging is key to success. Staff and students need to be treated with dignity, which is one's inherent value and worth. Good people with good intention can cause harm. Belonging or fully, or, or being fully human means more than having access. Belonging entails being respected at the basic level that includes the right to both create, co-create, and make demands. We're doing that tonight. We're having communication. We're co-creating. Hopefully, things, issues have been brought up that we can work together on to solve. Ken Shelton reminded us to ask in any culture, how are the children? That's important in many, many cultures. How are the children? Are we engaging in a cooperative or combative atmosphere? Cherry Prindle went over two styles of thinking, pessimistic and optimistic. Take ownership to what you do. Substitute your best friend in a situation you're engaged in that becomes confrontational, and then handle it from that point on. Scott Edgar reminded us when, when the brain is in stress, the brain does not fire in the same way. Trauma comes back as a reaction, not a memory. Anu Tarant has a great book out that I hope to read. It's Beyond Guilt Trips. So we were, as a district, and I think there was like 487 people that, that attended those sessions, which was pretty phenomenal, had an opportunity for a lot of educational issues. I just want to mention that it's very important to have these opportunities and to take advantage of them. And since becoming a board director in 2020, I have documented 18 clock hours of professional development, which is part of my job. On August 19th, we met with the South King County Discipline Coalition. I want to shout out to that committee for the people that spoke their truth. And, and we have agreed to not just do a couple meetings. We're going to continue the partnership. That's very important. On August 19th, as I mentioned before, I attended in person the Kent Lake Freshment Orientation, and it was great to see our kids. Some of the things that you brought up tonight, like three feet between kids, it was interesting how they got all those kids in their cafeteria area, because three feet was not observed exactly all the time, because that's what's going to happen in real life. They did their best. And tomorrow, I will be out in person visiting schools and hope to do more. And that's the way I learned. I'd like to see our board as a group go out and do a lot more site, onsite visits, because that's how we learn as a board. Looking forward to putting in place a long-term interim superintendent and get our, our new board in place. So as a full board, we can take time and due diligence in our selection of a new superintendent. Many issues ahead to get in place and work through, but I'm confident we will be good enough to manage the ship and keep it sailing to wonderful places. I wish all our students and staff the best going forward. Stay safe, stay healthy. And I will close what I always close with in my board reports. Government institutions exist because the community feels there is a need to be, to be developed for the common good. When decision-makers of those institutions fail to listen to their constituents, they fail. Thank you very much.
Director Binguas.
Yes, thank you. I first want to apologize for not being there in person. It's not because I didn't want to be with everyone. I had an unfortunate commitment, that, a prior commitment that I waited two and a half years for. So thank you for accommodating me over the phone. I do want to say congratulations, not congratulations, but the recognition for our maintenance facilities and custodial staff. I'm so thankful for all that you do. I have personal connections to custodial staff. My father was one, and it's just a very hard work. And I appreciate everything you've done these difficult, most difficult times in our history. So thank you. I want to also thank all the folks at Talk 2021. And Chief, Chief West, I apologize to all of our educators. It's something I look forward to every year, but I've been caring for an elderly for about a month and just haven't had a chance to do much of anything this past month. But I appreciated all of our school meetings, our South King County Discipline Coalition for all that they've shared, our Covington City Council, and also too thankful to our budget team and our budget and accounting team for all the work that you do. And I really am thankful to all of our educators for coming through for our students and getting our school started tomorrow. I also will be at the Kent Laboratory opening, and Director Benner, I get to meet you on Saturday. Look forward to that, and thank you to everybody for pulling together for tomorrow. Have a great day tomorrow, school opening. Thank you.
Right, so thank you again to everyone that has worked so hard to make tomorrow happen. Thank you to those who have been here. I know, like I said, some of us have kids at home that are preparing for our first, their first day of school tomorrow. So I wish everyone the best. Thank you to all of the staff. Again, it's just, I mean, your sacrifice and the work that you put in can't always be described. So thank you so much for all of that, for making this happen. I have, I think it'll be a very positive day tomorrow, and I know a lot of kids are excited, a lot of staff are excited. And so I will also be attending a school in the morning, so thank you for that. Maintenance staff, it goes without saying that without you, we would not be here. Thank you so much for all that you do. Often, you're underappreciated and overlooked, and so I think that recognition should be more regular. But, but I just want to know that you are, you are completely appreciated, and like I said, with And, and like I said, without you, we would not be here. So thank you so much for all of your sacrifices and hard work to make sure that schools are ready and safe for all of our students and staff to return. Um, I want to also thank interim superintendent Vela for stepping up and taking on this role. Um, it has not been easy by any means, and so I do appreciate all of the commitment. You were committed from day one, no questions asked. And so, and you have, uh, moved forward in this role admirably. And so I just want to thank you so much for, for the work that you've put in. And it does not go unnoticed that you have, you have been influential in how we're beginning to approach tomorrow. So thank you very much for your commitment to KSD that you've shown over the last several years and even previously. So I just really wanted to say that. Thank you very much for that. And everyone else that stepped up in that, in that transition. So people have had to take on other roles and so it is appreciated and noticed. Um, that said, I wish everyone, I thank everyone for watching. Thank you for attending. It was really nice to be in person again. So, um, I look forward to more meetings and I wish you all a good evening and a wonderful day tomorrow. So thank you so much. We are adjourned for an exception.